Did Jason call up and get excused?
No. Good evening all, and welcome to tonight's City Council Study Session. And since we're having this in the big room with the flag, I think it's appropriate that we all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we're in here because we're going over the staff budget presentations, so I'll go ahead and turn it over at this time to the City Manager to start us into the first one.
Thank you, and good evening Mayor and Members of City Council. Just a brief introduction before we start going through the budget presentations. As I mentioned last time, the purpose of these presentations is to provide the City Council with lots of information meeting in to the Budget Retreat on August 27th. It's an opportunity for you to ask questions, let us know what additional information you might like to have before the 27th, where there's an opportunity to resolve issues or reach consensus, that's always helpful but not necessary. The primary purpose is to provide you with lots of information, answer your questions, so when the Budget Retreat rolls around on the 27th, you're prepared to start working through issues and making decisions with respect to the 2013 budget. So that's the first point I wanted to make. Second point, the Department budget presentations that you're going to hear tonight, like last week, are intended to meet some key budget goals. First and foremost, our understanding from the feedback from Council is one of our primary goals going into 2013 is maintain levels of services. It's not a year necessarily to increase services, but also, the City Council does not desire to reduce levels of service, so our budgets are intended to maintain levels of service. Likewise, Department budgets intend to meet the goal of maintaining current city facilities. We know that's been a priority of Council in the past, so what you will see are proposed budget expenditures for 2013, to do the best we can to maintain the facilities that we already have. And then the third key budget priority that these budget presentations will address is taking care of current employees. You will notice that in the personnel services for 2013, we've planned in modest cost of living adjustments. Our goal is to maintain benefit levels in 2013 as well. So those are the three key budget goals that the Department-level budgets and Department Directors were asked to respond to when they prepared their budgets and submitted them. The last point I wanted to make before we start into the budget presentations is that the budgets that you'll see tonight are not the initial budgets that Department Heads proposed for 2013. You might recall that on a previous presentation from Mr. Tinklinburg, Departments are asked to put together a proposed budget for 2013, look at needed expenditures for the following budget year, and propose those things to the City Manager. We do ask that Departments to the extent possible maintain a flat budget going into next year, knowing that again, revenue is going to be tight. But regardless, because of the nature of work and the things that we're trying to accomplish, Departments will make requests for the following budget year, and we spent a lot of time going over those budget requests. If I remember the numbers correctly, the initial requests from Departments above and beyond carrying expenses forward into 2013 with maintaining services, keeping the same number of staff, the initial additional request from Departments was almost $5 million. That was $4 million worth of pavement management and an additional $900,000 of additional requests, additional expenses that are above and beyond what's in the current 2012 budget. So our process as the leadership team is to go through those requests and ultimately arrive at a recommended budget to the City Council that we feel strongly is an appropriate recommendation for the next budget year. So in some cases, what you will hear from Departments is not what they initially requested, but it's what we've agreed seems to be the most reasonable recommendation for the 2013 budget. So I wanted to explain that a little bit, and I'm happy to answer additional questions about the internal process that we go through to arrive at a recommended budget for the With that, I think we're ready to go into our first presentation unless anybody has any questions. All right, thank you, sir. The first presentation tonight, we do have several. Our goal is to move through them fairly quickly, but obviously give Council members the opportunity to ask plenty of questions. Can you switch me over, Laura? The first presentation tonight is an overview of the proposed budget for the City Manager's Office for 2013. This is an example that shows, again, what was approved in the 2012 budget, 1.279 million. The initial requested budget for 2013 was 1.335 million. Ultimately, what is being proposed by the City Manager is a budget of a little over a million dollars. Key changes are the recent restructuring in the City Manager's Office that reduced the number of personnel. It eliminated three positions, one Deputy City Manager, the Sustainability Coordinator position, and a Management Analyst position, which results in a reduction of $225,000. This shows graphically the structural change in the City Manager's Office. Again, we've eliminated one Deputy City Manager position, so those Departments, those Department Heads that had been reporting to a Deputy City Manager are now reporting to the City Manager with the exception of the Economic Development Division, which is now part of the External Services Deputy City Manager's responsibilities. So the top organizational chart shows what was originally in the 2012 budget. The X's indicate the positions that have been eliminated. The lower organizational chart is what's being proposed for the 2013 budget year. This is a blow-up version that provides a little bit of additional information. The current structure results in additional direct reports to the City Manager. We still have a Deputy City Manager for External Services. Those External Service Departments that are reporting to that Deputy City Manager are Public Works, Community Development, Parks and Recreation. The organizational change we made was to add Economic Development as part of the External Services Departments. The remaining Departments and Divisions that you see reflected in the organizational chart now report directly to the City Manager. Drilling down a little bit deeper into specific categories in the 2013 budget, essentially we're not proposing any additions to the City Manager's Office budget, with one exception, we are proposing some additional funds for the 2013 Memorial Day Parade. And that's the extent of the City Manager's Office budget. It's a fairly simple budget, but I would be happy to answer any questions.
Does the Council have any questions on the City Manager's Budget? Start over here with JD.
Can you explain to me the increase in Memorial Day Parade funds, what that would be for her?
I'm going to ask Mr. Cardero to explain those changes.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Councilwoman Carson, the increase, the bulk of it, will go towards getting equipment to have along the route, to provide better announcements, and also music for the parade. And the reason why we're, actually, the Parade Committee requested to have it in this year's budget was because we want to use 2013 as the early run, because in 2014, it's a big anniversary, and so we want to make sure that we have it. We've tried it, we know what the kinks are.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
Mr. McBroom, the eliminated positions of Sustainability Coordinator and the Management Analyst, how are those responsibilities being distributed?
In the case of the Management Analyst, the position was changed into an Administrative Specialist III position, so there is still a person performing some of those functions, not all of them, but at a lower salary. That's the Management Analyst position. The Sustainability Coordinator position, the intent is to have that become what we would call collateral duties, and have the city's Green Team, which is a staff team, multi-departmental team that's working on sustainability initiatives, kind of help carry on those efforts. There may be a point in the future when it might make sense to fill that position. Given the tight budget, we thought it was best to leave it vacant at least through the 2013 year.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Steve?
Yeah, it's Brian. On the slideshow here, I think on the second one, some of the things are a little different in the boxes that we have.
Whoops. Ever though this while we switch back to that one?
Yeah.
Was it, this is the slide that was-
Oh, maybe it's a different one.
This is a slightly different version of the organizational chart that explains a little more thoroughly those Department Heads that are reporting to the City Manager.
Okay. Now, this is just organizational, this has nothing to do with, now, in this, the budget amount, that includes all the Department Heads in that salary figure as far as Personnel Services? The 1.54 million? Or is that just the, that's the-
The 1,054,000, that's a very good question. 1,054,000 would be the salaries for those personnel that are assigned to the City Manager's Office, the administration portion of the City Manager's Office. So it'd be the City Manager, the Deputy City Manager, the Executive Administrator-
Just what's on here, right?
And Administrative Specialist.
Okay. Just those four categories, not taking a step down, right?
I'm sorry, it also includes the Intergovernmental Relations Manager, so those five positions would be covered by this budget.
So the only ones it wouldn't cover then would be Communications, Economic Development, and Police Department, correct?
Correct.
If that helps, Steve, to look at it that way.
Okay, that includes, as far as budget front, I think, this is just isn't salaries right here, right?
This would be the entire City Manager's Office budget.
Budget, okay.
Salaries plus other expenses.
All right.
Any other questions? Okay, I think we can move along.
Thank you, sir. The next budget presentation is what we refer to as the Legislative Budget, which is essentially the City Council's operating budget. In terms of summary figures, the Legislative Budget is proposed to increase by a little less than $20,000. The primary change in the budget from 2012 to 2013 is the addition of the city's contribution to the Northeast Greenway Corridor Initiative. We had talked about that briefly at a prior study session. We believe that next year's contribution of $20,000 to that effort may be the last year that that group stays together, working on distribution of those funds. So that's the most significant change to that Legislative Budget, year over year. Because this is the City Council's operating budget, we thought it was appropriate to provide additional line item information. You will be receiving a line item information for all of the Department budgets when we distribute the entire budget book in the next week or so, but in advance of that, we thought Council might have an interest in looking line item by line item in its operating budget. So this shows significant categories and how those categories are proposed to change in the 2013 budget. We're happy to answer specific questions about any of those line items, if you have Again, in terms of budget categories, there's the $20,000 budget enhancement for the National Greenway, the Northeast Greenway Corridor, no new positions proposed, no special consideration items, no capital equipment requests as part of this budget, and no significant line item variances. We do have some suggestions, some things for City Council to discuss when it comes to arriving at a budget that meets your approval for 2013. One is, an item that I've talked with several of you about individually, we've struggled a bit to match the city's budget up to the City Council policy regarding travel. I have a suggestion for a better way of addressing travel in the City Council's policies, and the budget that we're proposing for 2013 essentially implements this recommended change. And that is, currently in the City Council's policies, City Council members are limited to a travel allowance of $7,000 per Council member. The approved budget doesn't match up to that number very well. We had a brief discussion at the last City Council meeting about a Council member that was attending legitimate training conferences but was running into that $7,000 limit. My suggestion would be to budget for each of the nine Council members to attend several conferences every year. The National League of Cities Conference in Washington, the CML Conference here in Colorado in June, and the NLC Fall Conference that moves around the country. In addition to that, approved travel and budgeted travel would also include minimum required travel for Council members that sit on an NLC Steering Committee. All of that travel would be budgeted for and approved in the City Council travel policy. If a Council member wished to travel outside any of those approved conferences, that Council member would simply need to seek approval from the rest of Council for that travel. That's essentially how a trip was handled when two Council members wanted to attend an NLC conference back in the spring. Staff helped them estimate travel expenses. Those Council members brought that request forward to Council, and Council considered that request and approved it. It was handled slightly differently at that time. It was our understanding that that travel had to come out of discretionary funds. Our proposal would be to have sufficient money budgeted for City Council travel, that if additional conferences come up throughout the year, money would be available. It would simply be a matter of that Council member requesting permission from the rest of Council. So again, this is a recommendation to help address what I think are different comments and concerns that I've heard from individual Council members about the travel policy. There's never been an issue with having sufficient funds in the budget for travel. The issue has been more the City Council policy with respect to travel. So I would submit that for your consideration. The other item I wanted to recommend to you, again, in discussion with several of you individually, I think there's a desire among several of you to broaden the use of discretionary funds. We're not proposing that more discretionary funds be budgeted, but I would suggest that at an upcoming study session, you review the City Council policy with respect to discretionary funds, and perhaps consider a broader permitted use of those funds. The changes, in my opinion, the changes made to the discretionary fund policy last year unnecessarily limit the use of those funds. That's simply my opinion based on working more closely with you in the use of those funds over the last several months.
Then we amend policies if they-
Right. Mr. Gathers mentioning that if there's a discussion amongst Council and there's a desire to change that policy, we would bring back a formal amendment to that policy for Council to act on. So that's the second thing I wanted to mention as a discussion item with respect to the Legislative Budget. The third is, at Council's request, we have provided some funds in your budget for a reestablished youth commission. The proposed Legislative Budget provides for $10,000 for the youth commission, which we believe is enough for annual operations of the commission. Part of City Council's desire is to reestablish the ability for students to travel with City Council to the NLC Washington Conference. We believe we've provided enough funds in City Council's travel budget to allow for that additional travel as well. So $10,000 has been budgeted for the youth commission to cover operations. Any travel by students as part of the youth commission we think can be handled out of City Council's conference and travel budget. Finally, something that's come up in discussion among several of us at the staff level, the City Council and the Legislative Budget provides for $120,000 annual contribution to the Quality Community Foundation. Understanding that it's a tight budget year, we may see revenue below expenses in 2013, we still think it might be a good time for City Council to consider increasing what it provides to the Quality Community Foundation. We're seeing increased needs from community-based organizations. City Council is faced with increased requests throughout the year, and an effective way to deal with that may be to provide additional funds to the Quality Community Foundation. So when those requests come forward, City Council could refer agencies in need to the Quality Community Foundation. So those were four particular items that have occurred to us over the last several months and working with the City Council's Legislative Budget to be submit for City Council's consideration. Again, there's no need for resolution on these items tonight. They're really items for you to consider in advance of the Budget Retreat on August 27th. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Does the Council have any questions? Mr. Moreno?
Mr. McBroom, you mentioned upping our commitment to the Quality Community Foundation. Are you proposing that within this budget proposal? Because I just don't see it on the line item.
We have not proposed an increase in the draft budget. So we've kept it at the current year amount, which is $120,000, merely suggesting that for Council's consideration. If Council were to want to provide a greater contribution, we would certainly have to amend the budget.
So are you then expecting that the Council have that discussion at the Budget Retreat? Or, I'm just confused if you're proposing it for this year or for future years?
I think it's a worthy item of consideration for City Council at the Budget Retreat for the 2013 budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Douglas?
Thanks. As far as increasing those funds for the grant programs, at that time, we talk about how much money is allocated for each program? Or is that set by needs through the staff, or what the dividend to these needs when they come up?
Currently, the process is the City Council provides an annual budget or contribution to the Quality Community Foundation. This year, it's $120,000. The Quality Community Foundation then accepts applications for grants and then makes decisions on who to award those grants to and in what amounts. So City Council's only decision is to provide the lump sum to the Quality Community Foundation.
Okay. And has there been any input in the past as far as the City Council is, because I'm sure it's based on the size of the organization and how they're going to fill those needs?
I think there may be Council members that are better able to answer that than I am.
You know, I'm going to go ahead and hold mine for a minute. I'll go to Mr. McAdonick first.
Thank you. To pick up on Mr. McBroom's comments, the grant program was initially administered and those allocations made through City Council dialogue, and what we found was that there was a lot of contention frankly about, or suggestions from folks outside of Council that allocations were being made to organizations friendly to specific Council members. And so what we wanted to do is remove any fear or concern about favoritism in terms of how those grant dollars are being allocated, and the Quality Community- And the Quality Community Foundation itself was essentially in place only at the time for purposes of generating the... Running the golf tournament and generating dollars for the scholarship fund. And council essentially said we should look at essentially extending the charter of the Quality Community Foundation to look at them as really being put in the driver's seat in terms of identifying how best to allocate those funds and looking at them as sort of growing the function to not only take the dollars that the city gives, or that the council, I should say, allocates, but also to potentially seek dollars from other organizations in turn to create a more sustainable foundation. The other thing that was in play at that time was that the Music Fest had taken shape and we were expecting annually an allocation from the Music Fest that they were giving the city as an additional contributor to the fund. And so bottom line, there were, as we handed that function off to the Quality Community Foundation, they in turn created a more detailed application process and review process. And so ultimately, all of those allocations are based on the committee's review of the applications and determination on how best to split those out. So what we've seen in the last couple of years since they've taken that on is some really insightful decision-making on how to maybe meet more needs but maybe reduce dollars in one case and extend dollars in another. And so really, they are in charge of that. And then they provide us a readback at the point that those determinations have been made and then we have them, or they show up here and do the check distribution at a council meeting.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Bullock, you have something?
The caveat to that is that the Music Fest that always contributed to it, in the past two years, it's the Music Fest hasn't been occurring and Phish has come to town for a three-day stint. And we don't receive any of the money from the Phish concert. And so I was going... One of the things I was going to put on my notes for budget is how we reestablish our relationship with the AGE or AEG so we can still receive funds from some of these events that they promote out there and help the Quality Community Foundation.
Anyone else? Looks like that's it, Mr. Manager. Mr. Moreno, go ahead.
Regarding the travel budget and policy, are we leaving the bulk of that discussion for the retreat? Or would you prefer that discussion occur now?
Earlier, we receive feedback is always helpful, especially if it's going to require ultimately changes to the budget for 2013. So it's really council's preference. Discussion tonight is helpful but not absolutely necessary.
Okay.
You know, honestly, Mr. Moreno, I think if the council has a discussion on these items tonight, it's perfectly appropriate to have that discussion.
Okay. Just on the travel budget and policy, you know, I have no real objection to revising the policy to accommodate those folks that are on the steering committees. However, I would suggest that somewhere within that policy, we put in to place a requirement that going forward, if you are interested in serving on a steering committee, that you actually let the council know about that first. Because in a lot of ways, by choosing to serve on a steering committee, you're obligating the council to pay for that additional travel. And so I think it's only fair that that council member that's interested in serving on a steering committee first receive approval from the council to do so. That's all.
I don't disagree with that, Mr. Moreno. I think that that's appropriate so that we know. It's also important that the members of this council that need to get the training necessary to enhance their ability to serve the public, that they have that opportunity so that they can best serve the public. We don't want to turn it into where people just want to travel. So the main concern is that they come back and are able to show our residents that they did go and learn and now have new skills that they can put in place to better serve our community. That's the main objective. Councilwoman Carson.
No. Does I go the opposite way all the time? It's a delicate conversation with me. The published... I'm not sure if they know what these steering committees are for the NLC. It is my belief, and I know there's others that can argue a little different to this, that the benefits of those steering committees, NLC is in the receivership of that, not our city. Those steering committees are out there and functioning for NLC, so... And correct me if I'm wrong by using the words like setting policies, or where NLC is going to be going in the future, the direction of the classes that they, and the workshops and such. The problem is, is that there are no NLC funds for this. So the cities who send their counselors are picking up that bill 100%. And I do not... I don't mind participating in that to a degree, not to a degree that the majority of us or that half of us that sit on this council would sit on a steering committee. I don't believe that the citizens of Commerce City should be picking up the bill to that degree when we're talking about the National League of Cities. And so I don't believe it is fair that we, out of our budget, fulfill the need that is required by NLC to have people sitting on this. There are cities all over the nation that don't send anyone to NLC, who do not send their people... None of their people are on steering committees. So it really can be slighted that this is a huge thing that we as Commerce City would be picking up, that I do not believe is fair. I think it's fair for every city out there to say I'd fully support NLC of putting one or two of our counselors on your steering committee, but I probably wouldn't support any more than that.
Mr. Bullock?
I don't disagree with Ms. Carson because this is a conversation we've had with NLC that we are basically subsidizing them for a lot of the steering committees that we go to. And truth, we do get great training from some of it. And we've let them know their shortcomings in the past. And in what Ms. Carson said, I 100% agree with her because this is a conversation that we've been carrying on with NLC, that there are cities that are absolutely subsidizing the rest of the nation. And until they can collect 100% dues from around the country and make sure everybody is paying equally for their membership in NLC, you know, it shouldn't be an organization just for a travel club. And that some of these people that are going to all these different meetings and getting on all these different steering committees, that's exactly what they're using it for. And so I agree with Mr. Moreno's suggestion that council members come before council. If at any time they think that I am not serving or they don't think my service on LTC is benefiting this city, I will, with the request of council, step down. But I agree wholeheartedly with both Mr. Moreno and Ms. Carson that we as a city are not going to become a travel club for NLC.
Mr. McAdonick?
I would absolutely echo the comments. I think, you know, we've talked a lot about the need for training, and I think training is critical. And there are any number of opportunities that exist locally that we can and should be taking advantage of that don't necessitate travel, that don't necessitate a hotel stay. And so the potential exists to actually get a greater level of training here locally than, you know, with those same dollars as opposed to jumping on a plane and taking some of those classes. I think the challenge as well, in addition to the comments that have been made by my peers, is that when you do take these trainings through NLC, oftentimes they're, I call them sort of tasters, right? It's a really nice sort of high-level training, but it doesn't necessarily get deep into the weeds. And so I think, again, you're able to get a much more viable, much more in-depth training in some of the local offerings, even through some of the little, the classes offered through, whether it's Dr. Cog or our state organizations. So, yep, I'm on the same page in that regard.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to weigh in on that. I was able to attend some of the classes in Manhattan Beach. I guess it's a nice place to go to and everything, but it is part of being educated and talking to other cities and all that opportunity. You can't get that here. And I found that it was rewarding for me. And not like you have to go $10 of them. There's one coming, I think it's South Carolina here, next month, which I like to attend. But based on traveling funds, I was able to, well, not... I wasn't able to attend that meeting that's coming up. But it is, I mean, it's always ongoing, the more knowledge that you can get, whether it's loco through CML or through NLC. But it's very important. So when we do go to these cities, we go to these functions, they have classes. And I learned, went to Washington, I got a lot of information. And being able to speak to other folks that sit on other city councils, other cities, you know, it's an eye-opener, especially Bell, California, the situation they went through. Just talking to people and relating and seeing, you know, comparing cities and all that. You can't do that over phone, you can't do it through a book. I like that face-to-face contact, but, you know, I mean, that's something that you ask your folks up here in council if that's okay to go. I don't have any problem with that at all. Someone wanted to attend those meetings and ask permission, so I don't have a problem with any council member who wants to go to a meeting or so, as long as it's going to help them. Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, let's move on. Mr. Moreno, do you have something?
Yeah, just on a separate item. Mr. McBroom, can you go into a little more detail on the outside services general line item?
We've reduced that quite significantly from the current budget to $39,800. $30,000 of that $39,800 is for the Sand Creek Regional Greenway annual contribution. The balance of that... I don't know if you heard that. The balance, the $9,800 is a line item for city council resident relations, things like sending flowers or a fruit basket to a member of the community, and also the Adams County Commissioners Youth Award. So those three categories make up that $39,800.
So our financial commitment to Sand Creek, we're moving it out of the legislative budget?
No, it's staying in the legislative budget in this outside services line item. Another, we were just talking earlier today, that might actually better fit in the membership and dues line item, but these are all line items within the legislative budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Carson?
I just wanted to touch on, and I don't even see it here actually, I know you did touch on it though, the discretionary funds. I feel like I have hours and hours and hours invested into that conversation. And I did feel like that, and I... Somebody needs to remind me which council was here the last time we had that discussion. That was actually, and I didn't sit on council when discretionary fund was a fund that was established. But the criteria for that was to take out of those funds to attend dinners and functions throughout the state and area so it didn't come out of counselors' pockets. That was my understanding of where that originated. So could somebody take this conversation? Because I do believe that what we had said as a council was we were going to stick to what that plan was when that fund was originated.
Mr. Bullock?
I guess you could defer to either myself, Dominic, or Jason. That is exactly the conversation that was held. Those funds for discretionary use were used strictly for conferences, different events like the last week, they had Hispanic Chamber of Commerce event over at Botanic Gardens. Those were the events that the discretionary fund was supposed to be used for, any kind of gala or conference like that. It weren't supposed to, originally, when they were set up, they were never set up for travel. They were set up for golf tournaments, anything that we needed discretionary money for. What was really great about it, at the end of the year, if you hadn't used your discretionary money, all of it, you could donate it to a 501(c)(3) of your choice. Somehow or another, last year during the budget cycle, this got completely changed. And I remember we had input, but it seems like our input got put out, right? As it was changed, because we never got to say nothing about the final outcome of that. Am I correct, Mr. Gaylor?
Right. The bottom line of that was, first of all, it had to be for a benefit for the city.
Right.
And then the question became whether or not donating those funds to a 501(c)(3) could be justified as a benefit to the city. And it may or may not have been, but to avoid the discussion, it came out. And I don't recall exactly how or why it was not included, but I don't think the council specifically acted upon that requirement. But through the city manager's office, it did get deleted. And also, a specific provision in there, because it did occur on one occasion, is that there is a prohibition against using any of those funds for political purposes or campaign purposes or attending a political function. That's a specific prohibition.
Okay. Mr. Moreno, you have something to add?
Just on the item, I don't necessarily, actually, I don't disagree with the change that was made about the 501(c)(3) donation. We have an established authority for that, and that's the Quality Community Foundation. As Mr. McAdonick just said, that was created to avoid any appearance of favoritism among council members, that they could just donate money to an organization that they see fit. I think it was a proper change because we have, like I said, the authority, the Quality Community Foundation that does do that for us already. And we're talking about increasing our financial commitment to the Quality Community Foundation. So, you know, this, I think it's important to remember that discretionary funds are not personal funds, they're not on a personal account. They're city funds and they're meant to cover above and beyond conferences or meetings that a council member attends, so.
Mr. Moreno, do you remember that we couldn't even donate that money at the end of the year to the Quality Community Initiative? That if we wanted to put it in that fund, we were prohibited from doing that. And that was the city money being given back to the city so it could increase that fund. And I never understood why that happened, but if you could explain that to me.
Actually, I don't recall that, but I would still maintain that the proper way to do it is... it is through a budget allotment to the Quality Community Foundation, rather than, you know, a patchwork of discretionary funds here or there from individual council members.
And you know what, Mr. Moreno, I wouldn't disagree with that. I think that a lot of these city departments are going to go without what they need this year, so that we can maintain services and not have to lay anybody off, and we're on a tighter budget. That I think if those discretionary funds, what is left over of them, should be shown as revenue saved by the council at the end of the year and go into the pot, the general fund, just as the rest of the departments would have to be dealing with that. I think that shows that we're following the rules that we set forth for the departments, we're following those on the council. And realistically, as much as there are different venues out there, 501(c)(3)'s that we'd all like to see enhanced, it needs to be enhanced through the Quality Community Foundation. And I think that those funds should show as unspent revenues or unspent budgeted monies for the city, and they could be re-appropriated for departments that otherwise are doing without. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Mackelton?
Thank you. I just would echo Mr. Moreno and Mr. Ford's comments in that regard. I think just the only other piece to tie in on the discretionary funds, in addition to what Mr. Bullock said a few moments ago and giving some background on it, was that, you know, leading up to that time, we saw almost every Monday, it felt like somebody seeking permission on that evening for a dinner, an event, or something. And it became a time eater in terms of meetings. And we didn't have a good sense of how those monies were being spent, was it equitable across council? And so the concept was essentially a checkbook. Let's budget a specific amount that we think is reasonable to put in an individual's hands for representing the city in the course of their job. And then there's not a need, if the request for funds falls into certain criteria, there's essentially an approval and a coordination with the city manager's office, and it frees up those discussions from our evening each Monday. And so I think those were some of the key drivers for that. And it, you know, it's a great concept. And again, at the end of the day, we can get an easy report from staff in terms of what we've spent, where we've spent our money on. And I think it helps give us a sense of, you know, where we've been and what we've done, and keeping us in check. I mean, again, in terms of budgeting, just like the city, we need to stay within our means. And so you're given an allocation, and it's up to each of us to use that wisely. And if we find that we've used it up too fast, well, lesson learned. So, thanks.
Mr. City Manager?
Just to clarify a point made earlier in to address a question from Councilwoman Carson. Discretionary funds are shown on this slide as personal council reimbursement. And for the 2013 budget year, we are proposing to leave it at the current amount, which is $1,500 per year.
Mr. Moreno?
Just one last thing. One of the things that did come out of trying to further clarify our discretionary funds is actually a change that staff made, which was really helpful, is when you get a calendar invite to a specific event or something that Ms. Gallegos or whoever sends it to us clearly spells out on there, this is a budgeted event, or this is an item for discretionary funds. So it gives you a better idea of whether or not you, what kind of budget you're working with and what you would have to allot towards that event. So, thank you, staff, for doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Benson?
Yes, I know in the past, I've had some discussions about can we use those discretionary funds to fund award meeting? And I guess I'm the only one that has award meetings, so it only applies to me, but I'm just wondering, are those, is that a proper use of the money?
I'll give you my opinion, Mr. Benson. I think that that money is there for you to be able to attend those type of dinners and stuff, and whatever you don't use would roll back into the budget. I think that if you want to have award meeting, that that should come out of another part of our budget and not impact your discretionary funds. I think that it should, it should be handled by the city to make sure that your refreshments and stuff are taken care of. But that's just my personal opinion, that that shouldn't have to come out of your discretionary funds.
Well, is that, is that the view of the council? Because I don't think it has been the view of the council in the past.
I don't know. I was giving you my personal view.
I don't know.
Mr. Mackelton?
I think the way that we left it last time, that we had a discussion around award meeting funding, was that we needed to have a comprehensive plan, if you will, a framework that governed communication and community engagement via council. And I thought that, and I don't think it was at this year's retreat, I wasn't there, but the last couple of retreats, we talked about that being part of the overall communications initiative. So making sure that we've got essentially a means by which we're facilitating those, and not to, not as a means of limiting anyone's ability to have those events, but to do so in a coordinated manner. Because one of the things that I think we talked about and seemed to agree to is that there's a logic behind when you have those relative to other stuff going on, and to sort of maximize the bang for the buck, do so when there are key events or key points in the year, whether it's post-retreat or pre-budget or post-budget, so that we can use that messaging to get, or that is another opportunity to expose those messages to the community. And I think it's an area that we've not gone back and really cemented, but I think we kind of left it in a state that said, this is where we want to go. And I know we certainly saw an increase in the funding used to conduct those in the last year or so, but I still think that policy, the finalization of that policy was left outstanding. And I see some heads nodding, so I think I wasn't alone in that memory.
Yeah. You say it.
Well, and along those lines, I think we have to be careful that, number one, Mr. Benson, I think that if you want to have a meeting in your ward, inviting the council to talk about city-type ongoings, what's happening, one of those that you had this last year was on the oil and gas. I think it was very appropriate at the time. What we need to be careful of, and it goes right back to that, what is the angle? You know, right now, if Dominic Moreno, running for the State House, decided he wanted to have some kind of a to-do and utilize city funds and do it at the proper timing, could be misconstrued that he's doing it for his own personal gain. And I'm using you here, so, and not that you've done that, but I think that that's kind of where Mr. Mackelton is getting at, that those funds are used to make sure that we're getting information out to the residents based on something that is happening at the time that concerns one or all parts of the city. And I think that when we have a situation like that, that all the council members should participate, and regardless of what part of the community, whether it's your ward or another part of the community, that we go out and we do that to make sure that we're informing residents of what we're doing on particular situations that are concerning parts of the city or all of the city. So with that said, I think, I don't think that should be discretionary funds, but there needs to be some guidelines in place to ensure the council that those type of venues are being handled for the proper reasons, so that they can't be misused in the future.
Well, have they been misused in the past?
Not that I've seen. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that they have.
Because I know there seemed to be a big discussion or a big argument about using those funds to have the meeting that I had back in January on the fracking issues, which I thought was pretty relevant, but some people accused me of grandstanding by having that meeting, and I'm just trying to inform the citizens. People are saying, well, we ought to have a ward meeting or a town hall for everybody in the city, and that would be fine, but the only time we ever get anybody to attend is when we have a meeting in Ward Two. I don't know why that is or what the reason for it is, but that's what happens. And there are times, you know, like when there's some particular issue that comes up, like the oil and gas issues, I'd like to be able to, if I think it applies to my ward, which it did.
Absolutely.
I'd like to be able to have those meetings without having a big argument about it, which is what happened, you know, eight or nine months ago.
And you know what, Mr. Benson? I think that you were fully in line with what you're doing, and I think that it helped a lot of the residents in that area with the ongoings that are coming up on the Dog Track property. I think it would be totally appropriate for Mr. Teeter to have a ward meeting, once that progresses because of the interest, and because there's an interest in that particular area, maybe there would be more people that would attend. And I think the reason you get that kind of attendance is because of ongoings in your ward. That's an area that's growing and changing on a more like daily basis, and we're going to see that in Ward Four. So I think that that's when it's appropriate, and I don't think those funds should come out of your independent discretionary funds. I think that the city ought to look at that, the council, and say, hey, guess what? Do we want to make Mr. Benson or Mr. Teeter or any of the other council members up here pay for the punch and cookies for their ward meeting out of their discretionary funds, which is what you've mentioned in the past? And really, that's not the expense of award meeting. The expensive award meeting is the staff's time and effort to put it all together. So that should be handled in another manner. But, no, I don't think you did anything, anything wrong.
Well, you know, I agree with what you're saying, it's just that I'm not sure that that's the position of this council. I agree with everything that you're saying, but there just always seems to be an argument about this, and I'm just trying to get this upfront, out in the open, so we can have a discussion about it.
Sure. I'd like to ask the city manager, what part of the budget do you think would be the most relevant for any type of ward meetings or when there's an issue of concern in the city, like the Dog Track property, where for a special type of meeting, that those funds would come from?
Not, excuse me, notwithstanding the current language in the policy, it seems a reasonable expense for those discretionary funds. In that particular case, we were able to cover those expenses out of a different city budget, and so Mr. Benson's discretionary funds weren't needed. But it seems to me a reasonable use of those funds.
Okay. Anyone else before we move on? Councilwoman Carson?
I'll try to make it short, but it is my memory that through retreats and such, we were moving towards the direction of, call it a roadshow, however you want to call it, and I see Mr. Bullock shaking his head, into these community outreaches, and that we would do, if we did two a year, then the next year it was the opposite wards. But it really was taking all of this out to the citizens and growing on this. And I've seen, we now have a council table at the community outreach, but really trying to provide this, where we take this whole thing out to citizens and invite everybody, the water district, the fire, the schools, but so that the community that lives within that area can come out and do one-stop shopping. If they are interested in three departments, they just attend those three tables. But that it's a fun, enjoyable event for all. The problem with doing these individual ward meetings, as Mr. Benson has touched on, is nobody comes to ward meetings, he says, unless they're in his ward. I think he's probably a little correct about that. He has had the biggest turnouts. But where I would argue is fracking truly is a city issue. It wasn't a specific ward issue. We had residents that lived in that ward that were going to be highly affected, so I think it was this council's position to really try to take that issue and take it as close to them as they could, so that it was very easy for them to attend, but not ruling the other citizens out of that conversation that are in the city, because that was an entire city conversation was fracking. So, yeah, I'm not saying that I do believe that we should have individual money to have ward meetings. When something to that degree came up, I think it was handled. I think the funds were allocated by council to make sure that it was taken care of, and I thought it was done well. But no, I don't think we should be putting funds out there, because I do think you're running down a touchy thing. If Mr. Benson, and he's done a very good job, when he was sitting outside the deli once a month, once a week, having his, something with Benson, I covered for him once, I commend him for that. It was a wonderful way for him to reach out to the citizens. But I don't think that's anything that we as council need to start getting into, because I do think you can get yourself into an area, as the mayor has suggested, that it's campaigning instead of a true ward.
Can I have Jason first, and then we'll go to Steve?
I would echo Ms. Carson's comments and the mayor's comments in terms of the risk of those perceptions. I think the other thing is just, the part that frustrates me, and I think the fracking meeting was a great example, we were having a discussion on a matter of citywide importance. And rather than look at how we dealt with that matter as a council, as a collective, which we were trying to do, we get back into this mode of I and me as opposed to we. And the one thing that I've observed in my brief time on this council is that where we are focused on the I and the me, we never are as strong or successful. And where we focus on the we and working as a unit, despite our individual opinions, perceptions, or positions, rather, on any specific matter, where we are able to present a united front and show that even if we have differences of opinion on a subject, that we're all in it for the benefit of the city, that's a great tool, that's a great message for the community. And I think, again, where it comes down to the Dog Track or fracking or any of those things that are of citywide importance, it's important that they be facilitated and coordinated by staff, again, in an alignment to or in some reasonable coordination with the other discussion, so that it feeds in, we get more bang for our buck. And what I see happening when we try and do these one-offs is that it's almost working at cross purposes with where council staff are trying to go. And not that we don't want the forum to occur, but we want to maximize the benefit of that forum for exposure of the complete council and staff to our community and enable those conversations to take place. It shouldn't be necessary for any one person to try and lift the full load themselves. That's not the purpose of sitting on council. So I think, kind of picking up on Ms. Carson's point, I think it's absolutely important and encouraged that folks do the small group, one-on-one stuff in any manner that they can. And if there's a need to find funds within our discretion to do those kinds of small things, I think that makes perfect sense. But I think anytime it's a larger audience matter, we need to coordinate those through staff. And as a council, I think, again, get back to a formal policy of what is that outreach going to look like, how much are we going to allocate per year as a set aside? And then where we have special things, like we've talked about the Dog Track or QCI, those initiatives in and of themselves are going to get funded and have an allocation to help fund any additional or extra outreach or messaging that needs to happen. But that's just my two cents, and hopefully we can bring that back in a more formal discussion once we get the budget behind us.
Steve?
Oh, I know this is a study session, but if we could have the board lit up here, so, trying to get Sean's attention to speak, if that's okay, that way he can just look down and find out who wants to speak. Could you explain to facility services allocation, those general funds and the computer allocation? Because it sounds like facility services is something that you need a facility, that fund would come out of there. If not, just explain to me or us what these two allocations are.
There are two categories there. One, facility services. Every staff person, including council members, who utilizes office space and city facilities, there's a certain amount allocated to each of you that's provided into a fund to help maintain those facilities. So a certain amount per council member is an allocation that goes into the facility services fund to help essentially maintain the facility, pay the utilities, those sorts of things. Similarly, the computer allocation is per employee who utilizes technology while doing their jobs here at the city. There's a certain allocation per employee that goes to the IT department to help maintain the city's network, the other infrastructure that allows us to have the technology that we use day in and day out as part of our jobs. So those funds are, in the case of IT, those funds are provided to IT. The IT department in turn operates its budget out of those allocation funds that come from all of the other city departments.
Any other questions concerning the legislative budget before we move on?
Any other questions concerning the legislative budget before we move on? Seeing none, let's go to the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in closing, we will obviously have an opportunity to discuss the legislative budget again on August 27th.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry?
I said, okay, thank you.
The next presentation tonight is Parks, Recreation and Golf, and Carolyn Keith is here for that one.
the 2013 proposed budget for Parks, Recreation and Golf. Before I get started tonight, I'd like to acknowledge and recognize staff present tonight and ask that they stand. Karen O'Donnell, Recreation Manager; Mike Brown, Parks Planning and Operations Manager; and Paul Heebink, Golf Manager. I would not be able to present the 2013 proposed budget without acknowledging the time and hard work that staff puts into developing the budget every year. My thanks and appreciation to the division managers present tonight and their respective staff. I would also acknowledge Lori Rodkay, Executive Administrative Supervisor, for her efforts and support throughout the budget process. Tonight, I'll be providing you with a brief overview of the Parks and Recreation Department General Fund divisions, including Administration, Community Events, Recreation, and Parks Planning and Operations. Paul Heebink, Golf Manager, will provide you with an overview of the Golf Enterprise Fund following my presentation. The slides in our presentation tonight are numbered for your convenience in the lower right-hand corner if you would need to note your place regarding your comments and your questions. We'd like to address your questions once we've gotten through our entire brief presentation. Please note that my presentation tonight is slightly different from the one in your I'll begin this evening with our organizational chart for our department. I'm fortunate to work with a dedicated group of Park, Recreation and Golf professionals, including Administration, led by Lori Rodkay. Administration consists of five full-time employees and one part-time. Recreation, led by Karen O'Donnell, consists of 20 full-time employees and 131 part-time. Parks Planning and Operations, led by Mike Brown, consists of 13 full-time employees and 28 seasonal. And Golf, led by Paul Heebink, consists of eight full-time employees and 64 part-time and seasonal. For a total of 51 full-time employees, and at the height of our programs and services, approximately 224 part-time and seasonal employees. Before moving on, I'd like to comment on the benefits of Parks, Recreation and Golf. We believe our programs and services provide individuals with opportunities for active living and healthy lifestyles. We believe we provide opportunities for community connection. We believe our programs and services have a positive impact on the environment and a vibrant economy, all of which are essential for a quality community for a lifetime. Our Parks Planning and Operations Division, again, consists of 13 full-time staff and 28 seasonal, providing parks trails and open space planning, parks trails and open space development and construction project management, maintenance of our parks trails and some open space, including building grounds, our right-of-way beautification, and some satellite facilities. We also participate in the snow and ice control in conjunction with Public Works. We are responsible for the right-of-way beautification maintenance contract administration. And the Parks Division provides special event and special request support for department and citywide events. Our Parks Trails and Open Space Inventory consists of 18 developed parks for people and one for dogs, with a total of 117 acres. We maintain 602 acres of open space and 24.5 miles of trail. In 2011, the Parks Division replaced 143 trees, set up for 53 different events, and provide services for over 75,000 patrons attending 805 rentals in parks, including 28 tournaments at Pioneer Park. The Recreation Division consists, again, of 20 full-time employees and 131 part-time and seasonal, providing quality recreation and leisure opportunities in the areas of aquatics, youth and adult sports, dance, gymnastics, martial arts, fitness and wellness, adult and senior programs and services, youth and teen programs and services, Pioneer Park, including rentals and batting cages, and the Commerce City Recreation Center, providing programs and services, including custodial. The Commerce City Recreation Center operates 95 hours a week. In 2011, we had over 110,000 daily admission visits. We had over 9,800 program registrations. And between Parks, Recreation and Golf, accumulated over 15,500 volunteer hours, resulting in a savings of an hourly wage of approximately $147,000. Over the last five years, our department has exceeded 3.3 million in grants awarded for parks, trails, open space, and recreation programs and services. We also have our Administration Division, which consists of five full-time and one-part-time person, providing administrative and operational support functions for Parks, Recreation and Golf divisions. We are responsible for community events, planning and organizing, hosting citywide and department events such as Fourth Fest, Neighborhood Outreach, Halloween, Creepy Hallows, Birthday Lunch, Volunteer Recognition and Fishing Derby. This slide represents the meat and purpose of our presentation this evening. A summary of our 2013 proposed budget for Administration, Community Events, Parks and Recreation. Oops, didn't mean to do that. Personnel services include full-time salary and benefit increases, as well as part-time and seasonal wage increases in the Parks Division and Recreation Division, specifically the expansion of the Bridges Program and Youth Services, and the continuation of the part-time Recreation Assistant and Senior Services. Materials and Supplies increases are due primarily to ASME-related employee uniform expenses, small equipment replacement, and inflation adjustments for fertilizers, herbicides and pool chemicals. Our services and charges increases are due primarily to vehicle, facility and information technology allocations, which will be presented by Public Works and IT later this evening. The proposed 2013 budget maintains all existing levels of service within our department and does not reflect any new positions, enhancements, or special consideration requests. As you can see, our revenues increased slightly, resulting in a minimal increase of 1.2% or $69,085 in expenditures for the proposed 2012 budget for Parks and Recreation. With that, I am happy to address any questions that you may have regarding the Parks and Recreation budget as it relates to Administration, Community Events, Parks or Recreation.
Mr. Moreno, you have something?
Ms. Keith, can you flip back to the budget chart? The additional increase in Recreation revenues, what's that a result of?
It's a variety of small expansion in programs across the board. A great deal of our revenue increase was due to the expansion of the Bridges Program, which is a program we have in conjunction with Adams County School District 14 for after-school programs. They received a 21st Century grant, of which we were able to participate in. So it's a reimbursement. So we have the revenues coming in from their grant funds and expenditures going out on our expense side. And that was probably one of the bigger impacts on our budget as it relates to recreation program expansion. Other would be just small programs here and there. We have ups and downs, just kind of based on what people are interested in participating and what we project or think they might want to participate in.
Okay, but those revenues aren't a result of increases in registration fees or anything like that?
No, we did not consider increases in fees for existing programs.
Great. And then the instructors of some of the recreational programs that you offer, whether it be, I don't know, dancing classes or aerobics, are those instructors considered part-time seasonal or are they contractual?
Seasonal employees work for a specified period of time and you have to have a break in service. Part-time employees work on a year-round basis with a limited number of hours. And the type of employee you just referred to may work three times a week for an hour if they're teaching a class, or it just depends on the frequency of the class.
Are they reflected, though, in the part-time slash seasonal employees?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Thanks. Thank you, Carolyn. Materials and supplies, I know you're saying that to relate to, because it's just the whole Park Recreation fertilizer and all. Does this have anything to do with when there's the Fourth Fest or anything coming up at the Rec Center that you, how is that facilitated out to people?
There were no increases to the community events budget.
Okay, but out of all those, as far as events and, I'm sorry, community events, that comes from your department, correct?
Fourth Fest, yes.
Fourth Fest?
And the Neighborhood Outreaches.
All right, thank you.
The only event that is, and I believe it's in the legislative budget, is the Memorial Day Parade.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Moreno?
Actually, I had one more question. It's kind of a big request, so I wouldn't expect it to be answered before this budget. But if in the future we could get a study session of some sort, I'm interested in kind of seeing, and this is an issue that's been brought up before, what the difference is between employee benefits between full-time employees and part-time and seasonal employees? If we could have a study session on that in the future, I'd like to see that information.
We can do that?
Anyone else? Seeing none, go ahead and continue, Carolyn.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Paul Heebink, Golf Manager, to provide you with an overview of the Golf Enterprise Fund. However, before Paul begins, I'd like to share with you that tonight's golf presentation is based on input from a team assembled over the past few months to review golf revenues and expenditures. Our team consists of staff, including the City Manager, Deputy City Manager, Director of Finance, Director of Public Works, Golf Division staff, and staff from the Parks and Recreation Department. With that, I would introduce Paul Heebink.
Thank you, Carolyn. Excuse me. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I thought I'd start by giving an overview of the Golf Division, which is comprised of three distinct areas: maintenance, operations, and the restaurant. The maintenance staff is responsible for making sure Buffalo Run is kept in championship condition, so golfers can enjoy the beauty of the course, and we can continue to host prestigious tournaments and events. Last week, the USGA held the sectional qualifier for the Mid-Amateur Championship at Buffalo Run. It's quite an honor to be asked to host such events. Of the 14,000 public golf courses throughout the United States, only 30 were asked to host the sectional qualifier. And Buffalo Run, since it opened in 1996, has been asked and invited to host eight such events. So it's, again, quite an honor, and it's the job of the maintenance crew to make sure that the golf course is in excellent playing condition for these types of events, as well as for regular daily play. I brought the recognition award with me tonight, in case you'd like to see it later. It's, again, from the USGA, quite a nice award that they've given us for the clubhouse. The operations staff is responsible for the customer service aspects of the business, which includes booking reservations, greeting customers, and collecting payment for greens fees, merchandise, sales, et cetera. They also teach golf to adults and kids, including children from the Boys and Girls Club, and children from the PGA Golf in Schools program, from the Recreation Center's Team Camp, and from Buffalo Run initiatives like the Junior Camp and the Kids Club. Through these programs, kids get an opportunity to experience golf at a real golf course with professional instruction. The restaurant operation continues to grow and includes daily service for breakfast, lunch and dinner. We also offer banquets for special events, weddings, holiday parties, and now off-site catering as well. So before we get into the budget numbers, I want to update you on the current golf industry trends. When the recession hit, participation in golf slipped about 18% nationwide, and revenues declined right along with it. Some golf courses have closed as a result of the decline, and new construction of golf courses is at a standstill. The market correction should help existing courses like Buffalo Run improve their numbers in years to come. So far, at Buffalo Run, sales have been relatively flat for the last several years, but we are noticing a slight improvement in 2012. Reports from the National Golf Foundation and the PGA of America predict slow but steady growth over the next several years, and we may be seeing the beginning of that at Buffalo Run now. We will continue to look for ways to enhance revenues at the golf course, as well as monitor expenses on a daily basis. And the facility continues to add value to the community by offering recreation for those who play golf, by helping improve and maintain property values for residents in the city, and attracting people from surrounding areas to come visit Commerce City. We've also seen a significant increase in the amount of non-golfers who visit the restaurant. Families come out to enjoy dinner together, business groups meet over lunch, HOAs use the conference room in the evenings. There's just a variety of activities that go on at Buffalo Run, both on and off the golf course. Just this past weekend, we had a family come out to the restaurant and watched their son have a very special moment. He proposed marriage to his girlfriend. He got down on his knee, the whole nine yards, and, you know, the whole restaurant kind of cheered and clapped when he proposed to her. It was quite a special moment. Buffalo Run really has become a cornerstone of the community. And while budget expectations may not have been met in the last few years, I think it's important to recognize some of the community benefits that come from having a golf course like Buffalo Run in Commerce City. With that said, here are the budget numbers for next year, as well as 2011 and 2012 for comparison. The increase in personnel services are primarily due to more part-time wages in the restaurant because of increased business. There's also an increase in materials and supplies, mostly for the restaurant. However, it is offset somewhat by a reduction in services and charges. There are no significant changes in capital outlay or depreciation. And expenditures are estimated at 2.5 million. With revenues just over 2.3 million, the estimated shortfall is $184,476. As you can see, this number is less than the 2011 shortfall and about the same as this year's projected number. Some thoughts for the upcoming budget retreat are, do we continue operating the golf course as an enterprise fund like we have in the past? Or include golf in the Parks and Recreation Department budget? And if golf does remain an enterprise fund, as it has in the past, then A, do we allow the cash balance to fluctuate up and down depending on revenues and expenses? B, do we address the shortfall through reappropriation in the subsequent year? Or C, do we provide an annual contribution within the guidelines of the Tabor laws as part of the budget process? Options A and B do not require any action in the current budget cycle. And as a reminder, option A, allowing the cash balance to fluctuate, has been the practice since the golf course first opened. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'll answer any questions I can, if you have them.
I have a few right off the bat. You know, I really appreciate our golf course, and I know it does provide a service, and it's, it's an enhancement. It helped the northern area to grow to what it is today. However, there's a few things that, that have been troubling me. Number one, I know a lot of our local entities have been wanting to do golf tournaments, and they've been coming to me a lot this year about the cost at Buffalo Run being higher than other places. And it hasn't been just one nonprofit, it's, it's been several. And I want to know how we get some of that business that is local, local-generated business to not be leaving our community for, to go to other courses, to, to stay here. So I want to make sure, you know, first of all, I know some of the, you know, the payments haven't been made for a long time, and the, the city's been carrying the golf course. And I do believe it's that asset, so I don't have major concerns there. My major concerns are that because it's an asset to our community, that we're making sure that we're benefiting those within our community by encouraging them to use our golf course. And I don't know what the differences are if, say, the Rotary or the BPA or, or any of these other nonprofits want to do a tournament at Buffalo Run. What's the difference going to Green Valley, going to Park Hill? How do we, how do we try to keep our local nonprofit organizations doing business in Commerce City? And is that something that we need to look at from a budgetary standpoint now? Number two is making sure that those youth in our community that participate on either Prairie View or District 14 golf programs within our community, that we have some type of a program base to allow them to practice and to utilize our golf course as well. I know, is it Prairie View that, are they playing at Buffalo Run, or is it one of the twos playing, playing out at, at Adams County, or are they both back to Buffalo Run now?
Both, Adams City High School and Prairie View High School golf teams practice at Buffalo Run. Both the boys and the girls teams, so altogether that's four teams that practice that utilize the facilities at, at no charge.
Right. Now, my, my question though is, like during the summer months, those that participate in the golf program have had, have had some concern with them being able to practice there, and I think that's something that Mr. Douglas has brought up several times, so I'll let him expand on that if he'd like.
Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, since we provide, oh, well, thank you Paul for presentation, sorry. Since we provide a service, it's for both school districts, and I can see that, that would only enhance the girls' and boys' play as far as them continue to play golf. And that it just would go towards the kids that do make the cut, and right now, they're not cutting anybody, so it's pretty much everyone in the golf team. And maybe not everybody participates in it, but the ones who want to improve their game. I could see maybe allowing them at least once or twice a week to play a full round. Not an everyday thing, but just to see how that would work out, based on the paid customers. But this would only help with the golf programs at each, each school. I know that some schools have just stopped having golf because there hasn't been that much of interest, but there seems like a big interest in our two school districts.
Yes, absolutely, and we would be glad to put together a proposal based on some of the information you outlined that would allow some participation at no charge or a minimal cost. Could work with Carolyn and put together a proposal that we could bring back to council, and if that's the direction, then yes, by all means.
Okay, thank you.
Another piece that I wanted to address is I've had several employees mention, you know, they, they do get a benefit when it comes to the rec center, and they've asked me why we don't offer the employees a reduced rate to be able to utilize the golf course. And I'd like to make sure that we're looking after the employees, and, and that can be a health and wellness-type program as well, if there's any type of opportunity to allow the employees to golf there at a reduced rate, to, to help them not only spend time with each other. I don't know if there's, there's opportunity for an event for all the employees for golf, but that's something that has been brought to my attention by the employees. They would like to golf there. However, they, they feel that they're city employees, and they, they do for the organization, and, and they just wonder how come it's for the rec center and they don't get any benefit at the golf course.
Well, with your permission, I would again like to maybe work with members of staff to put together a proposal that would, you know, have different options, including a reduced cost or maybe space available play, so.
Great. You know, this is the kind of community where we take care of our youth, and we take care of our seniors and stuff, and, and we've always tried to take care of our employees too, so I want to make sure that we offer those type of programs. It helps with morale, and it helps in their daily, their daily work, that they, they feel respected and appreciated as employees, and, and I want to get the morale back up in the community, in, in the organization.
Mr. Macaldonie?
This is actually from previous, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Heebink, thanks for your presentation. I had a question in the, in the golf industry, kind of standards or trends that you pointed out, you know, it's pointed out that it really, the industry really slowed down, but it's making a, a slow and steady recovery. My question is, i-if that's the case, then why are we projecting that our golf revenues will go down in 2013 as opposed to in 2012? Are we just being conservative, or what's the reasoning behind that?
Well, in years, in years past, we've been asked to present a balanced budget as much as possible, and, and so last year, we were possibly a bit optimistic with our revenue estimates and the speed with which we, the recovery might take place. This year, we've really made an effort to be as accurate as possible with both the revenue estimates and the expense estimates. And so what you have presented there for the 2013 budget is what I would call a realistic expectation of both revenues and expenses.
Okay. The other question I had is, and maybe we'll get this breakout during the budget retreat, but it'd be helpful if, being that, you know, that the restaurant has been doing so well, if we could get a breakout of the restaurant's revenues and expenditures versus the rest of the golf course, that would be helpful to look at.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And you know, frankly, this is that, that one department that over the years that I've served on the city council, the residents always, always get upset about, and, and it was more, you know, back in the day when it was built than it is now. We bailed it out once. I know there haven't been any payments made and stuff, and, and I think it is an asset, but I want to make sure that the residents are getting what their, what their expenditures are going towards in benefit, and that may, you know, every year it comes back to how, they haven't been making payments. How do we get this back on track? And I'd really like to see if Roger threw some of these different venues, whether it's to, to make it its own department through Carolyn and, and take care of it, because you get hit a lot of times, well, the golf course isn't making its payments, and, and we're continually offsetting it. And I'm just being honest, this is what the residents come at me with. You know, the golf course is one of those things that's dragging the city down. I see it as a benefit. I am not telling you this because I'm trying to discourage you. I thank you for your presentation, but it's one of those, it's one of those things that for the last, you know, what has it been, about 20 years, 18 years, 16 years? It's, it's been a while. Every year, it comes up, and we need to get it solidified so that we know that we can go talk to our residents and be able to answer the questions of, you know, the golf course isn't making its payments back to the city and vice versa, whatever those concerns are. We need to make this to where the residents understand it as much as we do, so that we can continue to utilize it for the benefit of the city and as an asset. But on the other hand, be able to answer to why, what's going on with the golf course, and some of those payments, originally were structured too high, we restructured it, Roger put, put together a package. Apparently, it's still too high for, for that to, to be self-sufficient and, and handling it that way. So I don't know if the enterprise fund is the, the right route for it to be going, and I'd like to have, have more of an in-depth discussion on it, on how to make the golf course whole and a part of the city, so that it's handled in a different manner to where every year we don't have this, this, this continued, this continued loss or misconception of the, the, it's not even a misconception, this, the golf course can't repay the debt to the city, and it's really the city's endeavor. I just want to make sure we can make it whole so that on these budgets, it comes out that way, and, and I know Roger can put something together, but I'm doing this, I'm saying this for your benefit as well as the residents' benefit. The golf course has been an asset and a burden at the same time on this council for many, many years. I want to make sure that we can grow the golf course into being a self-sufficient part of this community, that benefits all of, all of the, the residents of this community equally. And we can't do it in the current realm of what it is, and nobody's ever addressed it over, over the, all the years that I've been on this council. So I would ask Roger to try to put something together, or, or Brian to, to put something together so that we can get this thing to where every year it doesn't come back, that payments haven't been made and what have you, and, and some perceive it as that the golf course isn't, isn't producing what it should be. And we all know as the, as that area develops, and as we create more homes, and we create more businesses, and we have restaurants and different things out there, that we'll have a different kind of draw, and, and it will be in a different situation in the years to come. But it doesn't happen overnight. Brian, do you have something to add?
Just indicate that we, as staff, share your concern 100%. That's, that was the, the driving factor to, to making the Golf Enterprise Fund presentation a little bit differently this year. And we, we discussed a few options for how to, how to structure that Golf Enterprise Fund budget, if it stays a Golf Enterprise Fund, if it's rolled into the Parks and Recreation Budget. There are other options, if you'd like us to explore those. We could either have that discussion as part of the budget retreat this year, and the options that we presented tonight are certainly a starting point for that discussion, or we can approve the 2013 budget in a manner similar to previous years and schedule this discussion later this fall or early next year to be able to do it perhaps in a, in a more detailed fashion in anticipation of perhaps making changes in the 2014 budget. But we, we share your concern, we think it's important to have full disclosure on, on how that enterprise fund is operating, and give council the opportunity to decide if it wants to structure it differently.
Thank you, and, and you know, we, we have these kind of discussions, but I don't want this to fall under the cracks. I want to make sure we deal with it, and we deal with it in a timely manner. So number one, the golf course staff and employees know what direction we're going, and the residents know what direction we're going, because every year we can't continually have this enterprise fund situation come back, because it's always the same old thing, we need to fix it. Perfect. Go ahead, Brian.
If I could respond to one of the comments that was made earlier, there was a, there's a concern that, that we may not be as competitive as we need to be to make sure that organizations in the community are able to hold events at an affordable price at Buffalo Run Golf Course. We did do some research on one recent concern regarding the Rotary Club, and when we actually looked at what Buffalo Run was offering the Rotary Club for its tournament, and then compared those prices to other area golf courses, what we found was that for the tournament the Rotary Club would like to have, the cost at Buffalo Run, which includes golf, carts, lunch, and gift certificates, is $76 per person. When we compared that to, to the price for the same services at both Riverdale Dunes and Green Valley Ranch, the cost at Buffalo Run was about $10 less per golfer. So it is a delicate balancing act. Again, with, with the budget being in the situation that it's in, we want to remain very competitive, we want to make sure we keep those events here locally, but at the same time, not drop prices to the point where we can't continue to maintain, maintain the golf course in the, in the condition that the communities come to expect.
Right. And it's hard, it's hard sitting up here because it seems like I'm talking out of both sides of my face. Help, help out these local nonprofits and, and try to be a little more realistic, you know, give some opportunities for the employees and, and take care of the youth, but at the same time, I'm telling you, make more money. So get creative, and, and I'm sure Roger will be coming back for us to have more discussion on the, the enterprise zone. Brian?
Well, let me ask you a follow-up question. Would you like additional options, additional research in advance of the retreat on the 27th, or is it something you would like to perhaps take up in more detail later in the fall, not part of the 2013 budget necessarily?
I want to hear from some of the council before we make the decision. First, I have Mr. Douglas?
Yes. You know, they're, they're a restaurant, that's, in the northern area, that's the only sit-down restaurant we have, and I think we should take advantage, full advantage of that, because a lot of folks just, you know, are asking for a sit-down restaurant, and they don't realize we, we have one. I know it, as far as accommodating big crowds and all that, doing the spring and summer, you have the outside chairs and everything. Inside, you know, we have changed some of the furniture around and everything, which is, which is nice, nice, nice enhancement. But I think we could take that restaurant to another level, and I would like to see us go that direction there. On your materials and supplies, as far as marketing, that's usually done in a target area, right, with those coupon packets type things, and I know there's been different types of market targeting in certain areas of the city. See if we could continue that, those efforts as well, and, and there's been some good prices. I mean, I, I've seen the emails, email blast and everything, so I can't say you guys are not trying to put it out there, and the prices have been very competitive versus other places. And as far as the upkeep on the greens, I've noticed, you know, I'm with our dry summer, very dry, the greens have looked pretty good, so I commend you on that. But we really need to focus on that restaurant piece, because that's, that really truly is the only sit-down restaurant we have in the northern area. And as far as enterprise fund, I, I'd like to see, since it's such a great asset for the city, that somehow this could be part of the Parks and Rec Budget. We only have one rec center, we got one golf course. It's not like we're competing with other, other rec centers and things right now. So I would like to see what that will look like if we didn't use that as a golf enterprise fund, because this is ours, it's been taken care of from the last 16 years. So I'd like to see that route, if, just see what that will look like on paper. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Macaldonie?
This is one of those subjects that's always tough to get into, because as we bring up a, a statement like, it's got to pay for itself. I think it's important to have context around that discussion, so the community understands that we owe ourselves for the golf course. So we're not in-depth to anybody but ourselves. The, the reality is that we could write the debt off tomorrow, we own the golf course. This is a strategy in terms of portfolio management. If we take that piece of property and we were to pay ourselves back tomorrow, we now don't have the same asset that we had yesterday. It accounts differently, if I'm not mistaken. I think the point is, staff did a great presentation, I want to say it was about a year and a half ago, does that sound right, on essentially giving us a good in-depth look at how this is structured, the realities, if you will, of, of the golf course. And I think, rather than go do new work, it would be great if that content could get redistributed. Any footnotes that might speak to more recent data would be helpful, but I think the basic structure of that is really, really helpful. I think the other thing about the golf course subject, and I think this ties back to the mayor's comments, is that it may feel like we leave this thing undone all the time. To me, this is a perfect example of a subject that we should be putting on the agenda at either a retreat for our strategic discussions, or dedicating specific study session time to, because this is one of those things that, yeah, if we were to put money into it and expand the facility, you could see revenues increase on the restaurant, you could see revenues increase on the course. But without doing the due diligence or directing staff to do so, or more importantly, to our discussions last week, able to secure revenue, to actually create the capital investment to do the improvements that we might want to do that would in turn generate revenue, it's a non-starter discussion. So if we're going to talk about it, let's not talk about it in a piecemeal sense, let's actually say, let's have a discussion about the golf course. Let's actually say, let's have a discussion about the golf course and look at it in a comprehensive manner, so that when we come away from that discussion, we're in a position to actually make a decision and not just punt it again. Because I don't feel a need to talk about the golf course repaying until we've had such a discussion. Does that make sense?
Right.
So I would just suggest, and I know this isn't an evening to make a motion, but I think it would be good if, at our next regular meeting, we talk about when to direct staff to put together such a discussion based on when they can have the appropriate material available. And it sounds like staff's been having a more focused discussion, as we heard through the working group that was pulled together. So that sounds like the right pieces are already starting to be put into place.
And I would agree with you, Mr. Macaldoney. It's been punted for many years, and we need to have that discussion. It needs to be in a formal type setting, a study session, so that we all understand all the pieces of it, especially because I was gone for four years, and we have several new council members. But we need to have that discussion, because every year it comes up in this manner. So I appreciate your comment. Brian, did you have something to add?
Just to tag on, the general feedback I'm getting is to schedule it for a study session after the budget this fall perhaps, and we can dedicate more time to it, which would mean that we will budget for the Golf Enterprise Fund in a manner similar to the way that we've done it the last few years, which is a perfectly acceptable way to do it. But it doesn't address the broader issues that you've brought up tonight. So we'll plan for that later in the fall. And just as a reminder, because it's a study session tonight, you can't actually take any formal action.
Right. Okay. Mr. Moreno?
That's totally fine with me. I think, you know, I don't want to further kick this can down the road, but as the mayor said, we've got to get creative on some of these issues, which requires a lot of in-depth study. So I think appropriating, as we are going to continue in the 2013 budget, and then actually giving it the due consideration that it's deserved, I think is preferable.
Okay. JD?
I just agree. A golf course is something that is supposed to be utilized by people with miles and miles outside your city, not just like our rec center is built to really take care of our citizens and this and that. So yeah, I would like to see a very aggressive look at this, what it is that you believe that, where we could take this, and what it would require as far as a commitment. But where we think we could take this in the future, what could it become, or could it not become that, in your opinion? But something along those lines, that it's stagnant because we're not investing in it the way we should, or it's stagnant because the economy and it's not going to come back. But yeah, I really would like to see some of those things, where, I guess it's your belief, where we could take this and where it would be in five years if there was a plan that maybe was going down a different path than what we've done, or whatever. But really take a look at that.
Seeing no other discussion, Mr. Bullock? You got to push your light there, my friend.
I did, and it doesn't...
It doesn't work? Okay.
I guess all of it's been said, but it basically is what everybody on council said. It takes money to make money. And until we make investment in the golf course, or reinvest in the golf course, it's going to stay stagnant. So we've got to make the decision that we want to spend that money. But there's a whole bunch of money we want to spend, so this is just one of a lot of big decisions we have to make.
Now, seeing no other comments, thank you for coming in this evening, giving your presentation.
Thank you.
City manager, we can move on to the next piece.
Next is the Public Works Department's budget. I'd like to invite Greg Clemens forward for his 30th and final Public Works budget presentation.
Turn the mic out. I haven't sat here very often.
I was going to say, after 30 years, we think you know where the on and off switch for the microphone is.
You know me, Sean. Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. It's been my honor and privilege to serve the City of Commerce City and the citizens as well. As far as the budget is concerned, this is our structure within the Public Works Department, the Administration Division, Engineering, Street Maintenance, Fleet Management, and Facilities. It includes 46 full-time employees that serve the city, I think with real commitment and pride. They provide quality, direct citizen services for the public benefit. They also provide services for internal customers, the employees and the City Council and boards and commissions, as far as fleet and buildings and plant. And a key focus has been, and will continue to be, to maintain and preserve the investment this community has built over time. The Administration Division consists of five employees led by Amy Hendricks, the Executive Administrator Supervisor. This division provides administration and management support, including data entry, reception and customer service, research assistance, correspondence, files management, data management. Very little change in this budget. Services and charges includes $200 for credit card processing fees. Otherwise, it's a very straight budget. The Engineering Division is led by City Engineer Darren Sterling. The division provides a range of engineering services, including stormwater management, development review, construction inspection, project engineering and management, transportation and traffic. The division also manages the street lighting and street signal program. Development review is a very essential portion of this one. Customer service to ensure understanding and compliance with the standards and regulations of the city relating to engineering. Project engineering, one example is the 104th Avenue project that continues. Budget changes here, personnel services are up. This is primarily due to on-call services. We need to provide on-call services for fiber optic and other utilities inspections. If somebody's digging, we need to have somebody onboard that can provide the answers to that question. So we'll be providing that on-call pay. Materials and supplies is slightly up, $1,600, includes ASME employee clothing and some general increases. Services and charges, the largest increase there is for the street lighting budget. The cost of the utilities is similar from year to year. What we have a little trouble capturing is the changes in damage to those facilities from time to time, which that budget covers. It also includes an increase in the Havana Street lease, some small increases in career development and training, and some small increases in signal maintenance and traffic The Streets Division includes those functions, including asphalt and pothead hole repair, gravel roads, cracked ceiling, weed maintenance, which is a big one, storm sewer and drainage, traffic and sign maintenance, bridge maintenance. They also administer the mosquito control contract. Snow and ice control is an essential function, street cleaning, and they also manage the refuse and recycling contract. Sam Hoover leads that division, by the way. In answer to questions about maintaining levels of service, I thought this would be an example that might ring more true than some others. We have levels of service for our various services, and this is one for street sweeping. So that describes what services would be provided on what duration and regularity. Wouldn't note that the first one, sweep Class 1 and 2 streets during those snow months has essentially been eliminated because of changes in the past budgets to ice slicer product that doesn't require a lot of sweeping to clean up. So we're able to use those resources for other purposes rather than spending a lot of time and materials and cost to do that sweeping. Snow and ice control level of service is another one. This gives an idea of what we expect as far as providing the service and continuing that service as it continues to storm. Obviously, on c3gov.com, there are maps for both snow and ice control and the street sweeping service that provide more information. Changes in this budget, Personnel Services are down. That's a correction from the 2012 budget that overtime and on-call services was over, was duplicated, apparently. Materials and supplies, there's an increase there, generally a 3% increase for various materials, such as sign materials, asphalt and other road materials, general tools and supplies, and ASME clothing and shoes. It also, operating supplies also includes some expected increases in dump fees and Line driver is a piece of equipment that's been requested. It attaches to the striper and provides more efficient, more effective striping on turn lane stripes and other striping that we do in-house. We have some other requests as far as the regulatory signs. There is a federal mandate to replace signs with improved reflectivity by 2015. This expenditure will help to push that along. The replacement items there, the core drill and the pogo stick compactor are items used every day in the street operation. They're both falling apart and need to be replaced. The glass bead applicator is a, when you lay down stripes, the glass beads make them more reflective at night. And this would apply them more automatically than using your hand to spread them out on The refuse collection budget shows you the expected increase. This is based on a 4% cost of living increase, which is the maximum provided by the contract. We don't expect it to be at that level, but we won't know that until approximately March of next year, what that level will be. It also includes an increase of 144 units, which is the expected number of single-family The Fleet Division is managed by Larry Bly. That division provides preventive maintenance and repair services for all the city vehicles, which is considerable at this point. Includes all the cars, all the equipment that goes on the cars, trucks of various sizes, graders, loaders, mowers, motorcycles, trailers, et cetera. This is an Internal Services budget, so the cost of the operation is charged to the user departments. That's what the vehicle allocation line item in various divisions is. Major increases in this department are really in materials and supplies. Operating supplies, sublet repairs is expected, well, it exceeded $100,000 last year, so that is increasing about $15,000. And supplies for fuel, the last couple of years, we've exceeded half a million dollars for fuel and don't anticipate that trend to drastically reduce next year. Also included are increases for, some small increases for tires, and again, safety shoe This is the vehicle replacement request for 2013. The bottom line total is almost $1.3 million. Based on mileage, age, maintenance, cost history, the condition generally of the equipment and other factors, this schedule is maintained on an annual basis. This should help us to catch up slightly with past budget needs. These are financed from the retained earnings, so it doesn't necessarily impact the general fund appreciably. And it's based on the scheduled maintenance. Just as an example, the first two, four, six, nine items all relate to 10 patrol cars. That's the equipment and purchase price for that equipment. Ordinarily, you see PWS, there's two line items for tandem dump plows. Our regular schedule would not duplicate those in one year, but again, this is a year we need to catch up, and it does impact the budget. X-marked laser, excuse me.
Greg, do we have any return value on any of this? Like, do we offset any of these costs with the trade-in value of the vehicles or trucks or anything when you get new equipment?
Yes, sir. If they're not recycled into the fleet, for example, our patrol cars are often recycled into the fleet as staff cars or other support. They are auctioned, and the revenue goes back into the fund. Does that answer your question? The X-marked laser is a mower. Toral Grounds Master is a big mower. And if you have any other questions on that list, I'd be happy to answer them. It's a big list.
Does anybody have any questions on the council while we're at a point to ask questions based on what we've seen so far from Public Works? Mr. Macaldoney?
Thanks so much, Greg. It's been a great pleasure to work with you these years, and I really appreciate the, obviously, the experience and the perspective that you're able to bring to this. obviously, the experience and the perspective that you're able to bring to the discussion. On the topic of trash and refuse, I know, obviously, we see a big increase in the budget in front of us. Can we just remind everybody, I think the contract for trash and recycling is up next year, is that correct? So it would be an item that we would need to pick up in our discussions next year to talk about how that fits into the budget and how we fund it and what level of service would be looked at as we go forward. Is that accurate?
Yes, that contract, the first five-year period concludes at the end of next year, 2013. There are provisions for one-year continuances, but our staff is already anticipating that discussion.
Okay. Hey, thanks so much.
Anyone else? Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Clements, regarding the increase in personnel services, the 32,000 that you mentioned was for on-call services?
Yes, overtime.
Is that an existing employee or a new employee?
Actually, we have two inspectors that would share that responsibility. They wouldn't do it at the same time, but they would share that responsibility.
Great, thank you.
And just so everybody understands what that responsibility would be, is if there was a broken water main or sewer main or something like that, and some of our utilities were nearby, they would have to go out and be able to mark those and stand by to make sure our utilities weren't hit as part of those type of repairs. So there's an at-night or off-normal hour opportunity that they would have to be out to take care of those type of things, correct, Greg?
That's exactly correct, and one of our biggest liabilities is fiber. Somebody hits fiber, it's a big expense.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, Greg. Hey, when we do the, I'm sorry, street lights and traffic signals, when those traffic lights go out, are we replacing those lights with LED bulbs?
Traffic signals are equipped with LED bulbs.
Well, not traffic light, I'm saying the street lights.
Street lights are not. That has not been transformed as yet. The technology really hasn't been developed for street lighting purposes, and Excel or United Power has not transformed at this point to that technology.
Okay, so, but those lights go out, or is that our responsibility, or is that?
No, they would, Excel would fix it, repair it, or United Power.
And we pay the bill, right?
And we pay the bill.
So I think if we're doing that, we should demand that they look in LED lights, because technology, LED lights, from what I've seen, from my research, a lot of cities are going to LED lights. It's a tremendous saving. So if we're paying that utility bill, and LED lights, the wattage that it produces is really low, I think that that should be a demand with their contract with them.
The potential is definitely there. There's a big transformation cost, and they've got a wide range of coverage.
Okay, thank you.
If I might, I'll continue with facilities.
Yeah, there's no more questions at this time, so go ahead.
Thank you. Facilities Division is led by Mike Haggard. They provide maintenance and repair services for 26 buildings. All the mechanical, plumbing, electrical, remodeling and construction utilities and custodial services are provided out of that division, made up of four employees. It's also an internal services budget, and the costs are charged out to the user departments. That shows up as the facility allocation. It's divided up by square footage, generally. This budget is very flat. You'll see some adjustments there. It's a continuing challenge to try to project and accurately estimate costs of providing the services. It's based on actual spending and projected cost changes. Materials and supplies you'll see is estimated to be down, some counteracted by outside services. Those are generally contracts. The four individuals must rely a lot on contracting specialized work. And utilities, we started to see some benefit from the project, McKinstry project in the City Hall last year, but that only was for a couple of months in 2011. So those deductions should be much more next year. We have one project we're requesting. This is in the rec center. The roofed-up skylight panels are made of fiberglass, and they're starting to deteriorate, and so these are to be resurfaced and sealed to extend the life. The capital outlay, this fund has increased some for next year. What it's used for is to repair and replace pieces of equipment that may go down, need to be replaced, or big repairs at the various city facilities. For example, we had a compressor at the rec center, whoops, went down a couple of weeks ago at a cost of about $18,000. And also, in 2015, there's another federal mandate to replace units, HVAC units that utilize R22 refrigerants, and we've got several of those. Total cost estimate is $198,000. This will give us a chance to start that process. It's a number of units. So that concludes the various divisions in Public Works. If there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. McElhany?
Thanks again, Greg. On the, I believe you referenced the services and charges without allocations. That was the line item where the McKinstry sustainability effort was plugged in, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then from a capital perspective, you suggested that we've got the, where'd we go? The capital outlay for the various systems at city facilities, and then the additional requirement that'll be tied to the HVAC. Are those also items that could be looked at in an agreement with McKinstry in terms of how we fund those efforts? Because I believe some of those building systems, if you will, are eligible under that. I don't know if those were part of the original McKinstry analysis or not, or if it's something that we could have another look, given that we now know other systems might need to be replaced, if there's a way to look at that. I think just the benefit from, in my recollection, is that by going through an effort like that, we're able to essentially fix the cost of those over a longer period of time. They guarantee the savings effectively, and if things were to cost more otherwise, then we don't have to eat the cost.
I'm not able to answer that tonight, but it sounds like the financing mechanism is really where the advantage is, and we'll take a look at that.
Yeah. Thanks. And just on a related note, I know we have had a past update on some of those efforts. That would be a great one if we could get a more current look at the efforts, just to recap or reminder, if you will, of the overall, there was a presentation, I recall, that outlined all the potential projects, and then sort of the line at which we drew to say, let's go forward with these, based on the return on investment that was projected, to see what that list looks like and get a sense of what we might, how that factors into the go-forward look, if you will. Be good to catch folks up that weren't around when that was kicked off. Thanks.
We can certainly provide that.
Mr. Bullock?
I just want to say thank you, Greg. I've known you since I've been with the city, and that's been since '84. And I just want to thank you for your time, your service, and your friendship, because I can truly say, among the people in this city, you are one of my friends. Thank you so much for everything you've done for Commerce City. And I know this is your last budget, and I know you're sitting there thinking to yourself, you're laughing inside, thinking, I'll come here on days off and laugh at other people. But thank you so much for your time, Greg.
It's very much mutual, Renee. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And same for me, Greg. After working for you for 10 years, and then being able to sit up here and be a part of helping with the solution, and I hate to see you leave, but on the other hand, I want you to enjoy some time with your wife, and as a time to take advantage of those things.
Thank you.
So thanks.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. City Manager?
At the risk of dampening any enthusiasm in the room for the subject matter, does anybody need a break, or should we keep rolling?
You know, it's a, you want to take a break?
Little break, two minutes.
Okay, we'll take a two-minute break.
Action is enough, sir.
Well, that's all right. So did I, but I didn't take no break, I just...
This is so fascinating.[1264.13]
Division Budget, will you go ahead and make your presentation, please, at this time?
So Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for the opportunity to talk about the Division and the proposed 2013 budget. I wanted to share a little bit about the Division's vision, and how we go about doing the business on behalf of the city. The vision for the Division is really in response to City Council's goals. Improving communication has consistently been one of City Council's goals throughout the last four years, and it was also identified as a goal for this City Council during your February annual retreat. So why do we exist? It's really to be an information source for the city. Our vision is to deliver accurate, timely, and balanced information to many audiences, lead external and internal communication activities, promote the city's brand and reputation, and serve as a trusted resource in how to best communicate. So how do we achieve this vision and Council's expectations? Well, the Division sets goals through a strategic planning process, and we rely on data to drive our decisions and recommendations to the City Manager and City Council. Our goals include citizens that are informed and engaged about what the city is doing, and why we are doing it, a communication program that builds pride and connects all of the various audiences within our city. We want to make sure we have a consistent and coordinated flow of information. We don't just want to do one-offs, we want to make sure there's a true process and coordinated effort. We also want to leverage as many tools as possible to reach the various audiences that we serve. It's not just our newsletter, but it's social media, traditional media, mailings, et cetera. And we also develop programs that promote the reputation and city attributes to the entire region. These goals and visions were really derived from numerous sources, including past Council retreats, the 2010 communications audit, our 2011 citizen survey, individual council interactions we've had over the last year and a half, and our employee survey. Last year was really the first opportunity we had as a city to be strategic in our communications efforts, consistent with your desires. As many of you know, I started last year in January of 2011, and prior to that, the last time we had consistency in Division staffing, leadership, and budget management was 2007, because we've had somewhat of a revolving door. So it was a great opportunity last year for me to learn more about what the needs of the city were, to learn more about Council's desires and goals, and City Management's objectives, and set parameters to help ensure future success. So I'd like to talk a little bit about what we do. The Communications Division is within the City Manager's Office, and we're really a service-based organization. We serve two customers. There's external customers, such as residents, businesses, other agencies, and nonprofits, that need information about the city, and why we're making various decisions. And then we have a lot of internal customers. There's divisions and departments that need to get information out to those external audiences, as well as a very large audience of city employees, that need information, as well as even council members. And the way that we're structured as a team is that each member is responsible for a specific program area, or department and division. I wanted to give you a couple examples of that, and be more happy to answer questions at the end of the presentation. For example, our Senior Communications Specialist, Julia Emco, splits her time between the Economic Development Division and Internal Communications, so she's dedicated to providing communications, activities, and support for both of those important functions. She also serves as my backup, in terms of media relations and other areas when I'm not available. Our Web Development Coordinator, Tanya Westby, manages the Internet for the city, the Intranet for the city, and also serves as our photography point of contact. Ivan Castrejon does the city's Hispanic communications outreach. She's bilingual, so that's an extreme help for us. She's also the point of contact for Neighborhood Services, and the Police Department's Crime Prevention Unit. Megan Dwyer is a communications specialist that's responsible for Parks and Recreation. She supports community events, as well as does marketing on behalf of the golf course. And then Stephanie Johnson, who's another communications specialist, manages all of our social media accounts for the city. She produces our city newsletter. She does public works and planning, as well as the Housing Authority. And then myself, I serve as the primary media spokesperson, and the support for City Council and City Management. I also do our budget, vendor, Division Management, and manage our policies that we have, that are communications-related for the city. And then I also work on various specific projects that have a citywide benefit, so oil and gas, for example, the Mile High Greyhound Park, and QCI. So what does the Division do to achieve the goals and the vision consistent with Council's priorities? These are a list of all the activities we do on a daily basis. I wanted to talk about a few of those, to give you some perspective. As I mentioned earlier, because we have single points of contact, we really do work with all of the departments to provide their external communication activities. This means we meet with them to determine how best strategically needs to be done, so we can get information out in the right way, in the right manner. We also evaluate whether or not those strategies were successful, and we create materials, such as flyers, ads, brochures, et cetera. We kind of like to say that we're an extension of those Division's respective staffs, because we're really a part and parcel of those groups, and that's, in a way, to break down the silos of information that we have, and to make sure we're cross-coordinating. So we don't schedule something for Public Works that might have a conflict with something in Parks and Rec, so we try to work and provide that cross coordination as well. We also serve as the Public Information Officer for the city, interacting with media outlets on local, regional, and national levels. We manage the Internet, the Intranet, all of the social media sites on behalf of the city. We provide support to Council with talking points, speeches. We write the proclamations and plan the recognitions. And we also do events, such as ward meetings or town halls. We also coordinate and promote the community events. We work very closely with Carolyn's group, and lead the promotional efforts on those. We also plan some of our own. And we also do the public meetings, such as the oil and gas meetings, so we produce those on behalf of the city. We've seen some great results since 2011, which means we're making inroads on your goals, as well as our customer expectations. For example, when we talk about earned media, or media stories that are placed in local, regional, or national publications, TV, or radio, we saw 140 stories that we personally placed just in the last quarter. Because we've dedicated time and resources to social media, we've seen a 17% increase in our Twitter followers, and a 3,000% increase in how people interact with us on Facebook. And to give you perspective on the daily communication needs our departments have, I wanted to give an example of what we've done for the Parks and Recreation Department just within the last six months. We've produced 66 flyers, nine brochures, nine mailings, 36 posters and banners, 11 advertisements, six senior newsletters, seven special events, and 14 strategic work plans. And a good example of events that we produced was the recent press conference to highlight the Police Department's recovery efforts. We pulled a professional event together in just 48 hours with regional and national So let's talk about the 2013 proposed budget. We're proposing an overall reduction in personnel, materials, and supplies, services, and charges. The reduction in Personnel Services, there was carryover from 2011 into 2012 for part-time and intern staff that we have not used, and so we're getting rid of that Personnel Services, because we don't have a need to do that in the future. Our materials and supplies are remaining constant, and these represent items we buy, such as foam core for the public meeting boards, or the boards for Neighborhood Outreach that we use for City Council and the City Manager's Office, or QCI, shovels or sledgehammers for various events that we help produce, such as the senior groundbreaking for the renovations, and office supplies that we have needs for, such as SD cards for cameras. The Services and Charges line item does not include the interdepartmental allocations, but it does include items such as the printing and mailing cost for the city newsletter, which is sent to over 20,000 households 12 times a year. It also includes department-specific publications, so when Economic Development is going to ICSC, and they need brochures, or they need that interactive retail map, we pay for those to be developed and produced. When Community Development is doing a Weekend Warrior Program, we print the flyers for those to go to local businesses to help promote the program. Or when we're doing a Summer Awareness Campaign for Neighborhood Services, those are the items that we produce for departments specifically, or at least some examples. We also provide event support, that's part of Services and Charges, so additional signage for events, any materials that are needed, mailings, and even advertisements. City letterhead and business cards for city, all, the entire city, is actually included in the Services and Charges line item of the Communications Division budget. There's also several mailings that we do, for example, the Summer in the City mailing postcard that we did this year is included in our budget. And then Community Surveying, that's a line item that we have in the budget, and that this year is going to the QCI survey that's being done. The Revenue line item represents the reimbursements we receive from other local government agencies for the city newsletter. This is booked as revenue, and it goes to the general fund, it doesn't offset our costs, but we do account for that money coming in, but it doesn't come to my budget, it goes directly to the general fund. And based on our first true year of budgeting since 2007, we're really actually tracking the actual costs, and we expect there's going to be several cost increases in the coming year. Postage and printing for the city newsletter, we expect to increase. We generally see a 25% increase from the US Post Office in bulk mail. We're going to have to take the printing out to bid, because we've held our printing vendor firm for the last three years, and they've told us that they're going to have to raise their rates, so we'll be going out to bid at the end of the year for that. We expect an increase there. And then the phone survey, the biannual Community Needs Assessment Telephone Survey that we did in 2011, we plan to do another one in 2013, and so there's an increase there, that's the actual cost. We believe we can absorb these cost increases while still reducing our overall budget, and so we're not asking for any additional enhancements or budget requests at this time. So with that, I would open it up for any questions or comments that you may have.
Does Council have any comments or questions on the Communication Budget? Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Michelle, for your presentation. I know last year, 2011, now we have 2012, 2013, as far as how that's budgeted, I know that we participated in the campaign, as far as the city getting involved with the taping of each member, as far as the folks who are running in East Ward are at large. Now, coming into 2013, are we still going to participate?
Councilman Douglas, Mayor, Member of Council, so last year, that's purely part of the Division and department-specific support we provide. You know, elections are run through the City Clerk's Office, and last year, working with City Clerk Bauer, she and I strategically thought of, how best could we provide information to our residents about the council candidates running? So that was a program that Ms. Bauer and I suggested, and then we implemented. So we would envision doing something very similar to 2013, similar as we did to last year, as we would do for 13, and that would be part of the department-specific type of publications and services we would provide.
Okay, because I'd like to see a breakdown of how much that is, because we haven't had that in the past, and I don't think we should be involved on that level, as far as, for that extent. On the newsletter, I know last week we had the stormwater drainage issue come up, and by looking at how many times this was publicized, or different ways, I guess there were six different ways this was put out there to the public on the storm drain. And a lot of feedback I'm getting, people do like the newsletter, but I think we should cut back, not to do it every month, but maybe try quarterly, or even every other month for 2013, see how that goes. Basically, a lot of folks are getting the information, but they seem to think it's the same format, so they just kind of set it aside, or put it recycle, which I don't like to hear, but that's what I'm hearing, and not everybody, I mean, you know, but I do hear that a lot. And I know that I requested that we do utilize that newspaper, or the newsletters, as much as we can. Hearing all the things that we have going on, and how we need to promote the golf course, they need some help as well. Being the only sedan restaurant in the north, there's a lot of things we could do when it comes to publication. And I know before, the budget for 2010... And I know before the budget for 2010, we also had some help from outside entity, SigPR. Are they still in our budget? Because I know back in December, we decided to take them out, out of the loop. And going forward, just to keep what we have since we were fully staffed. But I'm trying to think if there was a line item on there that said that we're still getting over $5,000 a month, is that true?
The contractor no longer provides staff support, which is primarily what they were brought in for. We have used them for graphic design services. That's a specialized function. That contract is currently out to bid. We still have a need for graphic design services. It's a very specialized function. And we're doing certainly much more in terms of graphic design. There's a couple of examples of where we still need very specialized design services. For example, the Parks and Recreation and Golf Division are really geared, and Economic Development for that matter, are really geared at attracting revenue, right? So, Economic Development, we want to entice people to come and invest in our city. In Recreation, we want to entice them to take advantage of our programs. So, there are some programs that want to have, or some events that need to have special designs. The Summer Camp Program is a great example where every year we're competing with summer camps throughout the region and locally for kids to participate. And every year, the Recreation Department comes up with a theme. And we take that theme and we try to design a look and graphic design around that so we can use that in advertising and shirts and promotions so we can bring youth to those programs. So, that need will still continue, but we're projecting a further decline. And part of the decline in materials and services charges reflects some of the decline we expect in future graphic design work because that was the approach, that we were going to continue to decrease that line item. So, it's currently out to bid is the short answer.
So, by having a full staff and having an outside bid, I know we can't do everything. It'd be nice to see how that's laid out because it's great that we have this communication team here. But more of a breakdown of the cost because I know at one point it was like 400 and something thousand. Then SigPR came on, it went to 805,000. I know that communication that you got as far as going forward, that from City Council, prior to this council here, was really much trying to promote our city and give it a branding and focusing on that, which we have. But I just see that that cost is huge because I've been looking at this, looking at other cities and everything, and looking at how they do communication. I know that we are things funneled in there. But I'm looking at the budget frame, at the financing framework and seeing that when these things are allocated all onto communications, some of these areas didn't really fluctuate as far as the cost. And I look at cities that are either compared to our size, either over or under slightly, that they're doing this with 200,000, 300,000, 400,000. And like, you know, like I said, we are different to me where we're at and everything. But as far as population-wise, getting the message out, some of these cities have been doing a very good job. They have been utilizing Channel 8 a lot more than what we have. Cost-wise, I'm sure it's about the same. So, and I know, like anytime comes to budget, we can always tighten things up and do a lot more with less. But I would like to see if what that amount is that we were paying SigPR in 2011 versus 2012 and then other agencies as far as going out to bid. Because I've been hearing that from other cities too, that we don't do enough when it comes out to contracting bids. And not just on your level, but as a city. So, it'd be nice to look at our city and see who has those type of resources and then tap into those.
Mr. Douglas, just to be clear, CIG is not providing any staff support for the city. So, the 2012 budget number only included graphic design services, which was approximately $60,000 for the entire year. We are putting that, that contract is out to bid. We have paid them up until this point. We're projecting a decline of about $10,000 for 2013 pending the outcome of bids. Again, when we planned for graphic design services in 2011, we talked about that number continuing to decrease. And so, that's my follow-up, is that that graphic design, materials and services charge will continue to decrease. So, that is currently what's been paid to date. I would have to pull for you, and I'm more than happy to do that. But that's the estimated line item. The second question, is there an example city that you could reference that you've been looking at?
Well, I'm looking at that right now, and there's actually about 16 of them.
Okay.
And, you know, I'm just, like I said, I'm looking at this from where we started this and where we're at right now. And I know things like I said, have been funnel into the communications. And we have done a lot for our city. Website and all and streamlining as far as the video, I mean, that's gotten a lot better. But, you know, I mean, it's like anything else, look at what works and what doesn't and move on from there. But I'm just amazed that that amount is that amount. I mean, that amount is in our $5,000.
I apologize, Mr. Douglas, for interrupting. The reason I ask is because my colleagues and I talk a lot about, well, every city council has separate goals and every city is run slightly differently. We certainly compare how we do the business on behalf of our city. And so, if there was a specific city you were looking at, I could give you some examples. When we look at similar-sized cities or even our neighbor up the road, for example, in Brighton, my peer is very, what her responsibilities are are very different than what my responsibilities are. Their Parks and Recreation Department has several people that not only do exclusively marketing for Parks and Rec but community events. And they outsource all of their economic development communications activities. If you look at a similar-sized city in terms of population, in terms of Castle Rock or Littleton or even Parker, those budgets range from 385 up to $600,000. And they don't include certain things. Some of those folks have a dedicated Channel 8 person that does all the programming and video. Others of those don't include any of their printing costs. It's adapted to somebody else. So, it really is an apples-to-oranges comparison. But I'd be more than happy to, if there was a specific example, we could really kind of map that out and sit with you individually and look at that.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add, just add on to Ms. Halsted's comments. The amount that the city spends on our communications efforts really is, depends on what city council's trying to achieve. So, to compare communications expenses across different cities is difficult to do without understanding what those communities' communication goals are. Is this the right amount to be spending on communications activities? That's ultimately council's decision. The best indicator I would have as the city manager that we're spending what we should be spending is that the division continues to exceed our expectations. And regularly, what we hear is, "Great job, please do more." We've continued to ramp up those efforts over the last few years. I get lots of positive comments about the work that we're doing, not only from people outside the organization, but primarily from departments within the organization. I'm very comfortable that the budget that's proposed for 2013 responds to what we believe council's direction is, and they're able to do it by spending less next year. So, I'm very pleased with how the division performs and continually impressed with the work that the division produces on behalf of the city.
Thank you. And I do have quite a few other people that are led up to speak. Just in general, where do we advertise for bidding for any type of external services for the city? I would imagine we have normal places that we put that advertisement.
We have normal places depending on what's being bid out. In this particular case, I know we provided it on the city's website. Can you elaborate where else it was?
It's been posted to the city website, and it's also posted to a Public Relations and Marketing listserv through Andrew Hudson's Joblist, for those of you who might be familiar with it. It's the go-to communications and graphic design and marketing source. So, those are the two places we've posted it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Moreno, you're next.
Ms. Halsted, I just want to say, I appreciate the overall reduction in the budget. You know, I think it's evidence that you are doing more with less, and that's exciting. I was excited to see a lot of the changes that occurred in the city's communications department, particularly when the median age of a city like Commerce City is in the 30s, wrapping up the social media efforts because we know more young people nowadays use Facebook, they use Twitter. And I've seen a dramatic difference between how those social media accounts were managed before and how they're managed now. And I'm very impressed with that, and I appreciate your work on that front. Regarding the newsletter piece of it, you know, this council has consistently said that communications, and particularly communications with the community, are in its top three goals consistently for the past, actually, since I've been on this council. It's been one of the top three goals since I've been here. Absent a regularly-delivered city publication, how then is the city supposed to communicate with our residents? You know, the monthly newsletter is an option. Is it the only option? Absolutely not. But I've found that people appreciate that at least they're getting information somehow, that at least on a monthly basis, they get a publication where they find out in the one-stop-shop what's going on with the school district, what's going on with the city, what's going on with the water district. They find that helpful. And included in that every month is information on how to contact their council members. It's helpful for them because they don't, it's hard to come by now, that kind of information. So, you know, I think there's, with going out to bid to the printer, like you said that we're going to, I think there's some opportunity to maybe look at the format of the newsletter and how that can be improved and whether or not we can make cost savings with the postal rates that we currently pay to get that out to folks. But I'm sure that's things that you're already considering. So, thanks, appreciate it.
Mr. Macaldowney.
Thanks so much for the update, Ms. Halsted. I think, you know, it's clear with the first budget that you've had the opportunity to guide that this is, I mean, we're moving in the right direction from a cost perspective. But I think it's such a false argument to start with looking straight at the numbers in terms of this discussion. I think this is an area where, of any area in the budget, we have to look beyond the straight dollars and cents cost and look at the benefit. And that's a challenging area from which to measure. Right now, we don't have great tools to measure necessarily the effectiveness of our communication. I think the data that you've got here in terms of the social media increases, that's obviously an area where we can have a definitive look at how our viewership is increasing, how, I mean, this is essentially people opting in, tuning in to channel Commerce City, whether it's through Twitter or through Facebook. And so, people are saying, "I want to hear and know more," and using these forums as a way to get that information. We talked, I heard you talk here at the top of the presentation about the priority that this council and past councils have placed on communication. The number-one thing that I hear when I talk to my neighbors and talk to folks around this community is, "I didn't know that." And so, if that's the answer that we're all getting, and we're increasing the way in which we communicate and where the number of means by which we're communicating, and we still have people out there that are coming back with that response, it tells me that we shouldn't be talking about doing less in terms of communication. But we need to continue to look at how we communicate, when we communicate, to whom we communicate, and how can we introduce tracking or reporting of some sort to develop a feedback loop so that we can understand which of the ways in which we're communicating are effective and which are not, so that we can have an educated discussion about areas that we should do less of and areas that we should do more of, so that each of those decisions relative to communication is being made based on where we have success? Can we gain more in terms of folks being aware, folks being tuned in by ramping up certain efforts and certainly ramping down other efforts? I just, you know, when I hear a suggestion that we decrease the frequency of communication, when I was the one sitting here the night that we directed council or directed staff to look at a monthly publication for the very reason that we had been dealing with a quarterly publication that wasn't getting the results. And the problem, just to put this into a practical sense, is that if I do a quarterly communication, by the time it actually gets out the door and gets into somebody's mailbox, it's ancient history. So, in a world of Twitter and Facebook and real-time media, you're essentially sending out an Encyclopedia Britannica versus real-time information. And that's not, that just doesn't make sense today. And so, I think the ability to send a publication out that we're able to partner with our other community parties to get out the door gives us an ability to put content that is relevant for future publication out and in front of our citizenry and our businesses and use these other tools like Facebook, like Twitter, and now Pinterest to give real-time information in terms of things that are happening now. It's a way to, if I think about it in marketing terms, it's a way to build brand. You're building engagement. You're building contact with your community. And these are things that are critical to having people feel part of the community. I just say hats off. I mean, when I look at the results page and the recognition, six regional and national awards, I think it speaks volumes about what's happening here. You know, communication has been an area of need. From the time I stepped on council, it has certainly had fits and starts. And I can't say that I've seen a more consistent degree of forward progress than we've had since you've come on board. And I, you know, my hat's off. I think, you know, aside from finding ways to, again, do more in terms of analysis to help us understand where communication and where our efforts are effective versus not, then I don't know that I have anything else to say other than thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. I'm going on three years of being on council. There has been a huge change of the ability to get news out to the citizens from when I first was sitting here. There was a terrible disconnect there. The level of professionalism that I believe you have brought to the Communication Department, I fully appreciate completely. Somebody who's coming out as school systems, the city is another entity that has to get information out to people all the time. The one thing that we lack is those students to take home that piece of paper every day and put it in that household. So, how do you get your information transferred from here to there? It's been something that we have all racked our brain on when we've gone. The one thing that you do know is you can have problems that are out there that aren't even true problems. But the reason the problem is coming about is because the lack of communication. And so, you have to combat that with whatever you can. Maybe some of the things that council has done, I don't know. I don't know how to gauge them, as you said, Mr. Macaldowney. But I do know from what I have heard from citizens, you still get a great response of, "I didn't know that." But you also find citizens who are much more engaged. When I started sitting here, we didn't have Channel 8. There's a lot of people I know that turn it on. Maybe they don't watch the entire council session because we talked quite a bit, but they catch up 10 minutes, 20 minutes. These events though, when you see these community outreach things, when I talk to people who have gone to those, I think that is something that we should probably keep looking at because I think that is a true way to really get out there and get your community involved. And then, they get to come to that specific come to that specific booth or whatever it is, and, and come with the questions that they had. So, like I said, I just want to thank you for what you've done, because council's goals were extraordinarily large, that we had to go from almost nothing, and, and what we have today is great. I know the way that when we have media stories, they have had a whole different look on them. And, and it really does, it changes the perception of people who live within your city, when you have that look of professionalism that I have seen, that you have brought to this department. And it's not, I want to thank everybody else in the department also. And, and the only place that I would say, Mr. Douglas, that I would be careful of, is when you're comparing, because I don't want the public to hear something different. I'm all for comparing. I, I believe that we should compare things to see. We should compare how we're doing as far as anything with every other city out there. But make sure that we know what we're comparing, because I do know, and only because my brother is the mayor pro Tim in Brighton, that your answers back to that communications is done very differently in that city. So it was easy for me to get those answers, to know why ours looked different than theirs, and it's because they had a complete different setup. So, yeah, I, I would, I guess I would get those answers before I really thought that we were way outside of the box in money-wise, so.
Yeah, I would like to, to say thank you, Michelle, for the, for the presentation. And you didn't have in your presentation some of the things where you stepped out and have done things on short notice, which I think need to be mentioned. When there was the tragedy in Aurora, it was, they, they had a short notice to be able to get anything done in a short window. And you went outside and helped a neighboring city put together their, their big event for the candlelight vigil. And that, that really showed me something, that, that you're on top of things over a weekend, able to step out of your comfort, comfort zone, and help another community. I came to you in short notice, and you were able to prepare a letter for the, the Sikh temple with the tragedy that occurred there. And I noticed that you're getting things done in very short notice, and taking care of making sure the city is, is doing its part, and looking like we need to be looking to move this city forward. So I appreciate those extra things that you do as well. Mr. Bullock?
I also want to thank you, Michelle, for the job that you've done. And not to beat a dead horse, but I think that to suggest any less communication is strictly going in the opposite direction than this council was intending. When the two weekly newspapers went out of business, there was a, a big decrease in information in this city. And even though we have just a monthly newsletter, it's cooperative through three different agencies and, or four, as a matter of fact, and it covers a lot of bases, and it does get a lot of information out to the residents. So I, I'm going to suggest, just from my point of view, don't do anything different than you are doing right now, except to exceed what you're doing right now, because what the last thing we need to do is have any kind of decrease in communications or information in the city, because I distinctly remember a few weeks back, council was talking about that people weren't getting enough information on oil and gas, on different issues, and they were complaining that they didn't know. Why would we go backwards in order to go forwards? I mean, that makes no sense to me, that anybody to ever say, "Let's go to a bi-weekly or bi-monthly or any kind of newsletter that is going to give us less news or less information to the public." And I can speak strictly from knowing that enough people came up to me within the last week and told me they read my article in the newsletter, and they actually complimented me on it. And a lot of people, I mean, I'm thinking to myself, "I need to go read that again," but it was good. Okay, but other than that, please, don't do anything less than you're doing right now. If anything, do more. Thank you.
And, Michelle, I missed something. One of the things that this council hasn't got to see, that I, I personally got to see, is all of these DIA meetings where we're meeting with Adams County and Brighton and Aurora, to, to make sure we take the proper stand that we need to take, to ensure that our IGA is whole, to see you there as our, as our representative for, for our PIO, working with the PIO from Adams County, the PIO from Brighton, and the PIO from Aurora, to make sure that the message is put out that encompasses all four entities. And I see some of the things that the rest of the council doesn't get to see on a daily basis, and I appreciate those things. And they should be a part of your presentation, because that's, that's some of the duties that, that you take on that you didn't mention. And I think that it helps when we're trying to swallow the type of pill we are on what the costs are. You, you do do more than what was laid out today.
Mr. Mayor, we call that other duties as assigned from the city manager's office and council support, so.
Right. But I, I know that nobody else in this room, other than the city manager and the assistant city manager and myself, know that, that these things are taking place. And it's nice to see that we are professional from a regional perspective with some of these other large cities in the county. With that being said, I would like to ask for have you make sure that when we are going out to bid, that that is accessible so that everybody can see, and, and double-check to make sure that that's on our website. Can you, do you have an idea of when that closes?
It closes August 31st. It was posted earlier last week.
Okay.
And it is on our website. We've been linking to it and responding to inquiries.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's out there where, where everybody can see it.
It's under bids.
Great, thank you, under bids. Okay, Mr. Douglas.
Yes, just want to add to, you know, I'm looking at all the departments, not just communications, just looking at our budget as a whole, as our city, and making sure what we do fits, fits our, fits our needs in our size of our city. So, I'm not going after anybody. So, I mean, you know, when I, when I speak, I'm speaking as, as Steve Douglas is sitting in this, this chair. And, and, you know, I, I hear a lot of slack and attack about what I'm saying, but, you know, I'm doing my job, and I'm, I'm trying to find out what's going on here, because before, in the last four years or so, these things weren't out there. We, we're, yeah, we're evolving everything, but I also want to make sure that we're evolving in the right way, in all departments, not just communications. I'm talking about everything, as a city as a whole. I appreciate the, the men and women that serve our community, that make our city, from down from the person who opens the door beginning of day to the person who closes the door, who sweeps the floors. We need everybody. Everybody makes a difference. And just so I make sure, just as I am in this chair and everyone else in this chair, that we're all held accountable. And, and that's, that's how I see that. I mean, that's, the toughest part of this job is making the tough decisions. It's asking those tough questions, and making sure everything's right. And, you know, I don't think council members should take slack for that. I mean, I'm doing my job. And if we're going to add to that, add to, add to what it, what it represents, the experience you've had, but don't take away from what I'm saying. So, I'm just trying to add, add in, in full support of everyone here. That's just my opinion. And at the end of the day, we still have a city to run, we still have a budget to balance. And yes, Channel Eight, I do like Channel Eight. I mean, I've watched that, and, and I've watched it a lot. And, and that's nice, but I think there's other ways we can enhance communication. And with what we have, we, we, we have to see where we can go from there, because there's, there are things that, that could go on, that could really enhance our city. And, and when it comes to dollars, maybe the dollars make sense after looking at this. But I need to see that for myself, and, and make sure we're on the right track. So, you know, let me do my job, and I, I would appreciate that. Thanks.
Before we move on, I want to make sure that Mr. Douglas knows that I think that it's important that he's asking the tough questions that he's asking. He's someone new on the council, and I want him to make sure that he understands what's going on, so that if he doesn't understand something, or he does understand it and it doesn't look right to him, that he, that he asks those hard questions. We do have a very tight budget, and I think it's important to note that every department has put together their budget, and then that budget got cut drastically. And there are a lot of these departments that are going without because we're in a budget crunch. And it started out at $5 million more than what we're at currently. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
And I think it would be important and helpful if the council could see what those budgets were and what they've been cut to. I know our administration is doing everything possible to, to make sure that we're running on the means that we need to be running on. So, I, I, I want you to know personally, Mr. Douglas, that I respect the questions that you're asking, the hard questions that you're asking, and that nobody's holding a negative, negativity towards you for asking those questions, because any time those questions are asked, and we, we receive those answers, it helps to educate all of us on particular items that you bring up. I just want to make sure that we, we do it broadly, and, and like you said, look at every department, and, and make sure that we're doing the best we can with the amount of money that we have. So, first of all, thank you for your comments, and secondly, thank you for your presentation. And let's move on to the next item. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But before I have John Howard come up, just to reiterate some information that we provided previously, these budget presentations, at this point, are summary presentations. It's not every line item in those department budgets. You will receive all of that detail in a budget book. It'll be produced electronically this year, but a budget book prior to the retreat on August 27th. I could appreciate that you're trying to understand these budgets, when all we're presenting to you so far is a summary. So that detail is coming. It's a lot of information. So also in that budget book for the retreat will be additional copies of the individual department presentations that you've seen over the last few meetings. It's an awful lot to digest, so we're certainly prepared to answer more detailed questions at the budget retreat, or leading up to that, once we send that detailed book out. With that, Mr. Howard is here to review the information technology budget.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council. There we go. Information technology works pretty much behind the scenes. We talked about that last year, and I think we've been successful. And definitely, if we stay behind the scenes, we're doing our work correctly. The IT department has a budget, total budget of about $2.5 million. We have three basic functions within the IT department. Myself, and administrative services, which includes business analysis. Operations Services has eight employees. Those are technicians, systems analysts, systems administrators, that type of thing. And GIS services, that is a coordinator, a specialist, and a GIS technician. Some of the current projects and activities that are underway, we have upgraded our network storage capacity and our backup capacity. That was something that was authorized in last year's budget, or in the 2012 budget. And on an ongoing basis, we're virtualizing our servers, where we're reducing the number of physical servers we have, and getting it down where, instead of 28, we're shooting for seven. That'll make us more green and also more efficient, and it's much more easy, easy to manage. Our network services, we've upgraded internet security, spam filtering. Last year, we got hit with spam severely, so we upgraded that this year. Both of those are in place at this point. We're in the process of upgrading Exchange, which is our email and calendar system. That's underway. Currently, we have migrated the IT staff, and we're testing to find the bugs and the issues that we might have before we roll it out to the organization. Interactive mapping, GIS data mapping management, all of those things are done on an ongoing basis. Application Services, these are the departmental applications. Finance, HR, we've performed upgrades there. We're in the process of upgrading sales tax. Permitting inspections, we've performed that upgrade. Contractor licensing, we're implementing, as we speak. And we're going to implement Citrix, which is a virtual desktop, doing that for the PDs, so that they can access the data and information they need more effectively from the field. Support Services, essentially is support, training, managing our internal services fund, similar to fleet and facilities. Procurement of equipment and software, maintenance, and eventually the replacement. We do process analysis and strategic planning. When we look at the budget, there's three main areas. Our operating budget, which is office supplies, operating supplies, consulting, those types of things. That has remained fairly flat, with the exception of some salaries. We'll look at that in a minute. The allocation budget, which is right here, the $212,000, we need to talk about that. I've got a slide in a few minutes. And our department requests have gone up slightly. Personnel Services, those have gone up, the usual salary adjustments that were budgeted in 2012. Materials and Supplies, we actually reduced that. Allocations, they've only gone up $250, and that is the allocations from fleet and facilities that comes to IT. Services and Charges, those have gone down, and capital outlay remained flat. So, in the operating budget, nothing very significant there. In the allocation variances, these are the things that we use to purchase hardware, maintain, and replace. We actually collect as we go to replace equipment, so that at the end of its life, we have the money already available to replace that piece of equipment. We're not tied to a budget here. We'll talk about some advantages of that in a few minutes. So, that has gone up. Hardware allocation itself has not changed much. Application software has gone up close to $4,000, and those are just changes in maintenance agreements. The big change in IT's budget is the network allocation. And that covers all of the equipment in IT, the infrastructure, the switches, hubs, routers, everything that connects everything together for our voice, voice and data services. What has caused this dramatic change, since we moved here in 2007, we have not collected to replace network hardware, and that's our switches, routers, at all of our various locations. That was part of an adjustment made to help budget, or help balance the budget, so purposely. We did not collect for those. We feel, working with Roger and City Manager, we feel we can start to collect again. So, $70,000, and the $69,000, $139,000. We're increasing the network allocation to begin getting on track and collecting the money to replace our network hardware. We're about five years into a seven-year estimated life, so we need to, to catch up. We also have $17,000, where we've purchased additional hardware that we need to maintain and replace. We have increased maintenance for the backup system that we implemented, AV systems, where we put in the cameras for Channel Eight, and that sort of thing. Network software, and a few other miscellaneous items. So, that's part of the increase, but the big one comes through beginning to collect to replace the network hardware again. Maintenance upgrades, replacements, that's part of our internal service fund. Once we have the capital to purchase that equipment, within the fund, we maintain and replace, and that just repeats itself. There's an opportunity to perform a one-time catch-up. We have undesignated retained earnings that we've accumulated over time. We have used those the last several years to assist in balancing the budget, but fortunately, we have not had to use those funds, so it's there. What I'm suggesting is that we take $686,000 to make up that gap between the year 2000 and where we currently are, where we weren't collecting funds, and simply moving it from. simply moving it from undesignated retained earnings over to designated retained earnings. It stays within the fund, doesn't have an impact on the general fund, but that'll bring us back in line, so that if those pieces of equipment need to be replaced, the funds will be available. Performing the catch-up, it'll bring us current, and it allows us to replace based on a business case, not simply because there's dollars available in a budget in a particular year. We want to replace the equipment when it needs to be replaced. So if we can run a plotter two extra years, that's fine. Money's there to replace it when we need to. We're not tied to a budget year and have to run out and replace it just because it was in the budget. The other thing it does, using this type of a system, it minimizes the extreme spikes, where we have years where we replace a lot of equipment versus years that we don't replace much, or when we need a major software purchase. It keeps those spikes to a minimum. The extra capital that we need to purchase new equipment, everything comes from the capital improvement program, and I understand we're going to be talking about that next week. The hardware replacement's just a critical component of the sustainability that we believe so much in. Let's see, the department requests, those are extra desktop tools. They might be graphics presentation software that has been requested, PCs, scanners, presentation equipment, minor enhancements to existing applications. Those actually come out of retained earnings, so those have no impact on the general fund. Retained earnings was designed to handle those minor purchases that need to be made. We're proposing one budget enhancement, and that is to increase our internet bandwidth. That'll run $17,000 per year on an ongoing basis. So much lately, we have been depending on hosted applications. Parks and Recreation, their software system is actually hosted. CRM, Neighborhood Services, their code enforcement application, it's hosted, so all of the traffic goes back and forth over the internet. The demand on email has gone through the roof compared to where it was seven years ago. So we're running with the same bandwidth as when we moved here in 2007. It's time to increase that. We have monitored. We have systems in place to watch the kind of traffic we have, and we keep hitting that ceiling. So it's time that we increase that. Upcoming projects and activities, IT's tied to all of the council priorities indirectly. We support the other departments and their commitments to council's priorities. Again, we're behind the scenes. We focus on sustainability and support. The Internal Services Fund, we've got an annual hardware replacement program that's part of that Internal Services Fund. Hardware and software maintenance, training, process improvement. In the CIP, we purchase new department applications. We want to do improvements to the wireless infrastructure and enhance connectivity for the PD's northern substation. That's something that we just have to do, because we're moving people up there. Want to finish up with our guiding principles and what we use to develop our budget and the way we function. Sustainability, if it exists today, whether it be an application or a function, it has to exist tomorrow. The organization depends on it. You depend on it. That's our number-one focus. Network infrastructure, voice and data, applications, procurement, maintenance, replacement, all of those are tied together to sustain what we already have purchased. It's a constantly changing environment, not just technology, but the organization and community, and we try and keep up with that. Distribution of information, that's changing daily. We're trying to enhance internal and external communications, and really, that's providing the tools to do that. It's other departments that actually utilize those tools and make it really happen. Information, when and where it's needed, mobility, iPads are a perfect example, smartphones. Things are changing dramatically, and how we attain and access information changes month by month, literally. Integration and sharing, collaboration, those are things we look at. Multi-channel services, internet, telephone, face-to-face, all of those different things. We try and improve those or provide tools to improve those. And availability of services, we want a virtual city hall that's available 24/7/365. That's my presentation on the budget. Can I answer any questions?
Mr. Macaldony.
Thank you very much for the update. And I know, as Ms. Carson said, a lot of folks don't necessarily get some of this, but I think the simple statement here is nearly everything we do, everything that staff does in this day and age, has a dependency on a computer, a printer, the internet, an iPad, your BlackBerry. And I think the quickest way to evidence that is when we have an email outage, and all of a sudden, people can't get online, and panic sets in, because business is conducted both internally and externally through those means. And so I think you said it early on, and I'll just kind of restate it. The way you know you have a good IT team is when you don't hear or see them very much, because it means that the network is up, it means that computers are running well, it means that people's email is fine, it means that they're not getting bombarded by spam. And so hats off to you and your team for all of that. I know every single one of us on the dais has had an occasion to reach out to somebody on your team for help getting a phone configured, or a laptop working, or something along those lines. And so, again, all of those services to us and to the rest of staff that keep the city running are greatly appreciated. There was a statement in there that I caught that I don't know that everybody will, it'll resonate with everybody, but you said that we're running on the same bandwidth we were in 2007.
That's correct.
And yet, if we look at what's happening in software, software used to be a CD that you got, and you'd install Windows. Today, you don't get the CD. You pull it down over the internet, or you don't even keep the application on your computer. You're actually literally using that over the internet, through the cloud or otherwise. And so all of those things have a demand on bandwidth. And I think everybody knows when you made your move from DSL to cable or something else, the difference that you saw in internet speed. My read on this is, we're working in a DSL vintage of access versus a higher bandwidth that is necessary to support these tools. So the costs and the changes make sense. I think what's more difficult to see here is the savings that we're getting elsewhere, right? With some of the technology that we're implementing, it creates efficiencies. It allows individual staff members to function as 1.5 instead of one individual in many instances, because they can do more or do so in less time. And so it's great to, these efficiencies don't always translate readily to, in this kind of information. You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
But I think we all feel it. And so, anyway, thank you.
When it doesn't exist, we feel it.
Yeah.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, John, for your presentation. I do like the IT part, the part that is very important when it comes to lines of communication, especially when you're out there in the field. We all work other jobs and all, and it's nice to communicate without having to use the phone. Information is sent over a different way now than it was 15, 20 years ago. And here, the bandwidth that you're using, and we need to upgrade that, because that's a need when you come to IT. Bandwidth is very important. As far as the network storage and the terabyte information in our servers, what's that like? Is it 40 terabytes or 100 terabytes that we have in our storage?
I honestly don't know at this point. I'd have to talk, get that information for you.
Okay.
We basically doubled it when we did that. And right along with that, you have to increase your backup capacity.
Mm-hmm.
So we did both of those things in preparation for new applications. Some information that the PD has been storing that we weren't storing actually on the network, so we brought that in. And then, as we upgraded Exchange, our mail and calendaring system, it required a significant increase in resources. Like Councilman Macaldony mentioned, every time we purchase a new application, it's bigger and bigger and bigger. It demands more resources, and it's just the nature of the game, and it sells a lot of disk drives.
Yes, it does.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
John, I want to thank you, too, for your presentation. I think the biggest concern for me, and what I need to ask one question to make sure that our residents and everybody are protected, are we where we need to be with security?
We have not done a security audit, and that is something that I would recommend. Internally, we have people that are watching that all the time. We have security in our applications. We have network security, VPN security. But it would definitely pay to do a security audit at some point and have that looked at from an external looking in.
Exactly. And I think that that's kind of where I'm going, is I want to make sure that you have the resources you need, but I need you to know whether you need them or not. So I would like to ask the council, at some point in time, that without even the city manager knowing when, I want to do a security audit, so that nobody knows it's coming, so that we can get a real factual idea of where we're at with our security, so that John can implement the necessary actions to make sure that our systems are secure at the level they need to be. If we say we're going to do one tomorrow, IT can be prepared and ready for it. I don't want them to even know it's coming. I want to talk to the council, but I would like the city manager and IT to come up with some ideas of what that cost is, to implement that cost into our budget, and then for this council, without anybody's knowledge, to be able to pull that plug, to have that test done, to make sure you know where we're at, we know where we're at, and anything we need to change to make sure that our residents and any information of the cities is protected by our security systems.
Definitely do that. I'll put together something in the form of a proposal.
I appreciate that.
And also, we'll look at Castle Rock and some of our other cities that we communicate with all the time, and look at the companies that they have used to do that.
Perfect. Yeah, I just, I don't want you guys to know it's coming, and one day down the line, I'll remember it and come to the council and say it's time. And we'll just see where everything's at, and not that you're doing anything wrong, just to make sure that we have all the protocols in place to make sure everything's protected. Okay?
That's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like we're going over to Laura for the City Clerk's Division.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to take this opportunity to present to you the 2013 budget information for the City Clerk's Office. The City Clerk's Office is a division within the City Manager's Office and is essential to government transparency because of our responsibility in keeping and making official records and legislation accessible to the community. Along with the tax collector, the clerk is the oldest public servant position. Our principal duties can be categorized into three focus areas: administrative, legislative, and elections. This gives you a snapshot of what our structure looks like, and not so much in personnel, because we are a small division, but more in the function areas of focus. The legislative focus consists of our records management program and licensing. We license both liquor, and as recently, will be licensing medical marijuana. The administrative program consists of providing support to council, boards and commissions, and we also are a passport acceptance facility for the U.S. Department of State. So even though our primary responsibilities are spread out into three focus areas, we do have one guiding mission, and that is a commitment to delivering exceptional customer service. Our office serves as an important link to our residents and visitors, providing services essential to the day-to-day needs of the general public. We are often the first point of contact with City Hall. As you all might recall, when you were preparing to run for your office, the first place you came to was the City Clerk's Office. What do I need to do to run for City Council? We are often a central point of contact for citizens who don't know where else to go. They might have come from other communities, where the City Clerk's Office serves as treasurer, serves as utilities. So the other day, we had a phone call asking about hornets. So again, we serve as a central point of contact into City Hall. The next hornet focus that I would like to talk about is our elections section. In under state statutes, the clerk is generally the designated election official for cities and counties. For purposes of voter registration, my office serves as deputy registrars. That means we can accept voter registrations for members of the community. For all local elections and issues, campaign finance forms are filed in my office. All forms of petitions, from annexation to GID, from initiative to nomination, are filed and verified within my division. This screen here provides you a snapshot of the past few years, and you will see that historically Commerce City conducts an election every year, and on average, the cost is approximately $15,000. According to the 2010 census, our population is approximately 45,000 people. Around 20,000 of those are registered voters, and we generally see a voter turnout of approximately 20 percent. As of December 11th, we had 11,524 active registered voters and 9,773 inactive voters. Our primary focus area number two is administrative, and that's under which you and your boards and commission program falls. Our administrative assistant spends 90 percent of her day in preparing and publishing your weekly meeting agendas, posting legal notices related to the agenda, and scanning and filing agenda items after each meeting. Our deputy city clerk works with you, council, and the communications division on filling vacancies on the various boards and commissions. In 2009, we were approved by the U.S. Department of State to serve as a passport acceptance facility and process an average of 40 applications per month. This program has been of great benefit to the community, as well as providing some revenue enhancement. This graph here provides a snapshot of program service levels under the administrative focus. As you can see, we generally compile, distribute, notice, and follow through with approximately 50 meetings per year, and we process approximately 40, as I said earlier, 40 passport applications per month. Under focus area number three, that's our legislative focus, by state statute, my office is designated as custodian of the laws and ordinances of the city, as well as the city seal. Every ordinance and resolution of the council, the Urban Renewal Authority, and the General Improvement District come through our office for processing. Since by statute, we are the keeper of the city records, it makes sense that we oversee compliance with processing public records requests. We work very closely with the legal department in this and other legislative areas. Administering the city's liquor licensing program also is done through the clerk's office. There are approximately 53 liquor licensed establishments within Commerce City. The application process starts with us, and we process every renewal annually. Additionally, we work closely with the police department and the city attorney's office when a violation in one of the licensed establishments occurs. Medical marijuana licensing will also be administered through my division. This graph provides you a snapshot of program service levels under the legislative focus. We process on average 40 ordinances and 67 resolutions per year. And public records requests come in at approximately 149 per year. And public records requests come in at approximately 149 per year. So our division is one of the smallest within the organization. As I said before, we are made up of three staff members: myself, the city clerk, you have a deputy city clerk who acts in my capacity if I'm unavailable, and we have an administrative assistant. And we operate on a budget of $250,000 annually. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Does the council have any questions or comments on the City Clerk's budget? I do. I think you do a heck of a lot for the $250,000 that's budgeted for your department. You take care of a lot of, a lot of things, and, and we appreciate it. Mr. McAldonie.
I would echo the mayor's comments and also add that it was a neat surprise to see the City Clerk's Office turn into a, a revenue generator, at least in a tiny perspect, perspective. And I think more than revenue generation on that, that was a, you know, a, a great service to add to the community. I mean, I know a ton of folks who have taken advantage of it that would have never thought to come to the, the city to have that service performed, and, and it's been neat to be able to let folks know when we hear somebody's gonna be traveling to, hey, you don't have to drive all the way down at, you know, 225 and, and Parker Road to get that done, you can come right down the street. And so, you know, that's the kind of thing that, but I'd love to see, you know, more folks made aware of that and take full advantage, but it sounds like you've got a, a pretty fair amount of traffic as it is. So, I guess, as the mayor said again, thanks for doing all you do with, with what you've got, and I think you always exceed our expectations, so thank you.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes, thank you Laura, for that presentation, and I can say, I do appreciate your services. While I've been here on council, and even in the prior years, you've been very helpful, so I appreciate that, and along with your, your other staff members. Thanks.
Mr. Bullock.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay, seeing no one else, we're gonna move on to the next overview. Human Resources.
Mr. Mayor, this will actually be our final presentation tonight. We'd originally planned a final, kind of wrap-up budget presentation, but we'll do that next week, 'cause there's a couple of, couple of budget presentations left. So the final one for tonight is our Human Resources Director, Heather Spencer.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Well, like John said, we are a fairly small department, and we are focused internally, so we do a lot of working behind the scenes. Have a fairly small department with a director. Under that is the HR supervisor, who currently supervises three HR generalists, and then we have a risk manager and an administrative staff person. The HR department is, is really working towards becoming a lot more of a proactive partner and strategic, rather than functioning as a reactive department. We've been looking at best practices, and we continually search for ways to evolve in the way we do business to also meet the city's needs in the way they're evolving. We work with all levels of the organization on fulfilling their recruitment needs and looking at the pre-employment processes. Currently, the city has two union contracts, and HR is very involved in those union negotiations. We review and update with the assistance of the employee benefit team, all of the different benefits that our employees participate in. And then, we continually look at the value that we can bring through the updating training and organizational programs that employees need to be educated on. As well as, we also do annual compensation studies and participate in analysis so that we're making sure that our compensation plans are current and updated, and not to mention the compliance that is necessary for any organization when it comes to looking at state and federal laws. Some, excuse me, specific projects that we're focused on right now is a progressive disciplinary process that will be more outlined and defined. Looking at updating the performance evaluation tool to make it more of an interactive tool. We are currently updating our supervisory training, wanting to have supervisors be much more involved in the process of the interviews, and knowing what can and can't be asked during that process, as well as just educating all employees, and particularly supervisors, in the changes that have taken place in our employee policies, and keeping them current also on the union contracts. One of the things that we are looking to enhance our customer service is an applicant tracking system. It will really enhance the ability for our supervisors to screen applications, as well as it will enhance the ability for our applicants to see where they're at in the communication process and the recruitment process. And then, of course, risk management is a continual process. The department budget is fairly simple, and we've had some small increases in personnel services. The material and supplies is an area where we have increased. That's primarily due to the badges that our city uses to access all of the secure areas. There are some changes within the services, and with, the service area is primarily due to the increases in the different types of memberships that we participate in, like Mountain State's Employers Council and CML, that's where we get all of our survey data, that sort of thing. And there is no capital outlay. This is more of a specific line item, showing at the very bottom, we have a very small increase overall. So that is pretty much the end of my budget, at the end of the train, you know, a short sweet caboose. Any questions that I can answer?
Counsel, have any questions? Mr. Douglas, do you have a question on, on this one, or that's from last time? Okay, thank you. Nobody? Mr. McAldonie?
Thanks very much, Ms. Spencer. On the, the addition of the risk manager, I know that was a, a key add recently. Any, any insight into how that function is performing, or the, the value that that's brought to the organization? I know that was one of those functions where we talked about, you know, here's a salary at a time where we weren't really looking at increasing salaries, but when we looked at the overall potential benefit of, of that in terms of savings and avoidance, it, it seemed to make great sense. So, I just wanted to wonder if there was any further insight you might have offhand, or if that's something we can get an update on at some point down the road. I don't think we've heard anything yet about how that function's performing.
Sure, a little bit of the instantaneous result that I've been able to see directly correlated with the budget, and that is, he is going after subrogating claims, so in other words, if we have some sort of property damage in which, say, a citizen hits a light pole-
Mm-hmm.
-he's going after those, subrogating those claims out, so that the insurance company of, of whatever the damage was caused by is being reclaimed through those insurance providers. So, he's recaptured almost 100,000 in the nine to 12 months that he's been here in subrogating claims, so that in itself-
One little area with a big head.
-has been very remarkable.
That's great, thanks for the quick example, and didn't mean to put you on, on the spot, but thanks.
Seeing no one else, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. City Manager, is that all you have for us this evening?
One final item, Mr. Mayor. We did send out a city manager's report a few hours ago, and I wanted to take a quick, a few minutes and review briefly the information that's contained in the report this week. It's a rather thick report with a number of follow-up items, I'm not gonna review them in detail, but just want to summarize them. The first update we have, Councilman Douglas had asked us to check on how Canopy Parking was doing at living up to their economic development agreement that the city entered into with Canopy Parking. We provided some information in the city manager's report as to how Canopy Parking is doing to live up to their end of the agreement. Mayor Ford had asked us to work on getting a meeting set up with the owner of the Mile High Event Center, and you see, we've got that set up for, set up for September 5th. We wanted to let council know that we received the city's suite tickets for the Phish concert. Our thought is the most equitable way to distribute those tickets to council members is to give council members four tickets each. It could be four tickets for one night, two tickets for two different nights, allow you to perhaps trade amongst yourselves if you're not interested, or you'd like to go to, or you'd like more tickets than just the four that you're allocated. That leaves a sufficient number remaining to use for other economic development purposes, and, and perhaps to make them available to employees within the organization. If you know what night you'd like to attend, please give Lisa a call, and we can arrange to get those tickets to you. Last week, there was a concern about malfunctioning Crossing Arms at the Burlington Northern Crossing on 104th Avenue. We're working with Burlington Northern to make sure they address that problem. What we provided in the report tonight is contact information. If, if a council member or a member of the community would like to, to make a complaint directly to Burlington Northern, it seems to me it's most effective to, to put that call right into Burlington Northern. We can certainly call them on your behalf, but it's probably quicker if you can make them aware directly of that problem. They have a, they have a hotline that they, they check regularly to make sure that they're addressing the problems as soon as they become aware of them. We have provided an update in the report this evening about the proposed circus at the Mile High Event Center. A permit has not been issued for that event, but it looks as if they are on track to receive a permit. There's quite a bit of documentation they're required to provide, and at this point, it looks like they're going to be able to do that. They would like the circus to begin on August 16th, and again, although the permit has not been issued, it, it appears as though they are on track to provide all the necessary documentation to meet the city's requirements for an organized event permit. At a, at a recent meeting between our city council, the Brighton City Council, and the 27J School Board, there was a lot of discussion about installing a safety path on the north side of 120th Avenue to the west of Prairie View High School. Last week, city council had asked us to send a letter to Adams County, to ask them to financially participate in the project, and talking with Brighton City Manager Emmanuel Escobal, Brighton has agreed to take on the project manager role for that project and use their own crews to do the work. So they're getting some updated estimates, and we think it'll be possible for Commerce City and Brighton to pay for that work at a very significantly reduced cost beyond what was talked about previously. So we'll continue to update you as we move forward with that project. Councilman Bullock had received some complaints about officers speeding along Monaco. Command staff in the police department is gonna make that an item of focus during their weekly briefings with patrol officers. Councilman Bullock had raised last week a concern about the I-270 realignment option for I-70. We found that that's true. We've provided some information here to explain where we think that's coming from, and we're gonna need support from council members at the next NADA meeting on August 23rd, I believe is the date for that meeting. I think we sent some information out during the meeting tonight regarding that. I think Mayor Ford is our primary on NADA, Councilman Benson is our, is our alternate. If we can coordinate with one of you to be at that next NADA meeting, that'll be an important opportunity for us to continue to make our position known about the I-70 Mayor Proton Moreno had asked us to ramp up our efforts to issue press releases and bulletins to the community in Spanish. We are continuing to increase our efforts to do that. Recent examples were the Fourth Fest, the National Night Out communications that we did to the community, which were done in English and in Spanish. Back to the event center, we do have a new operator seeking an entertainment license to operate in an event center, operate an event center, in the event center. Although a permit has not been issued, it looks like they are getting close to meeting the city's requirements for an entertainment license. That's to occupy the existing event center at the north end of the building. We also have a request for another company that wishes to operate an event center at the south end of the building. Again, we are reviewing both applications, and it, it appears at this point that they will be able to meet the city's ordinance requirements for an Entertainment II license. We will keep you posted as that works through the process. A question came up last week about addressing drainage issues in Fairfax Park. We've got some information in the city manager's report tonight on the work that we've been doing to try and address significant flood events and the damage it causes in the park. So please contact us if you have specific questions about, about the information. And finally, Councilman Douglas had raised the issue of using city news to educate the community about our efforts to pursue our stormwater utility. We've got some information. I think I summarized this at last week's meeting, we've provided that detail in the update tonight. And I guess the very final item, several council members had asked for copies of, of the federal mandate that requires that we have a stormwater management system. So, actually, the city manager's report is quite thick, 'cause we included the Clean Water Act, which is the federal legislation that mandates that we do those things, and also, we included a copy of the city's current year National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. That's quite a mouthful. So, we provided that information. Please contact us if, if you have questions.
We have a question for Brian. Mr. Moreno?
Mr. McRae, it doesn't have to be right now, but can you provide, at some point, perhaps this week, information to myself and other council members about why the event center is classified as a, as a Entertainment II and not an Entertainment I?
Yes.
Thank you.
We will research that and provide that information out, out to council.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Go ahead.
My, my apologies. One final question of council. Roger and his staff are trying to make sure we're providing all of the information council will need for the budget retreat on the 27th. If you have any special requests, any additional information, I mentioned tonight, we're gonna provide copies of the presentations, and then the entire proposed budget book. If there's other information that you would like, certainly let us know, now would be great, or in an email after tonight. We're gonna be starting to work in earnest to put that budget book together, so it's ready well in advance of the retreat on the 27th. So any information you're looking for that you haven't seen, simply let us know, we'll do our best to get it to you.
Okay, Mr. Benson, did you have something?
Yes, Brian, you said that you had looked into the rumors about the realignment of I-70, you found them to be true? Is that what?
A more accurate statement would be that there are new parties interested in the alignment of I-70 that are re-raising the issue of shifting it to the 270 alignment. They are not parties that were part of the pact process-
Right.
-but they, the rumors are true. There are folks that are trying to push CDOT to re-study shifting I-70 onto the 270 alignment.
Okay, I guess the rumor may be true as far as there are some people who are, who think that they can have some effect on that, but I've talked to people at CDOT, when I went to the source, that's not going to happen. I mean, it's gonna go along the existing alignment, 50 to 100 feet south of where it is right now, but any thought of going up I-270 at this point, it is just a rumor, and it's probably started, or the people that, in fact, I think, that there are two people that were referred to as crackpots, who are trying to do something about this, it's just not gonna happen. I mean, we need to, there's a lady named Rebecca White at CDOT, she's gonna be sending me an email. I'll forward that on to you for forwarding to the city council if you wish, but it's just, you can always have a couple of idiots going around saying, well, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, but nobody's gonna listen to them, not at CDOT, but-
We, we, we do want to make sure we don't underreact to those rumors and push CDOT for an official statement, that they're not gonna reopen the option of shifting it to that I-270 alignment. As far as I know, CDOT hasn't said that that's officially closed, and they're not going to consider it, so we want to make sure-
Everything that I heard, you know, I was on the stack for about a little over- Everything that I heard, you know, I was on the stack for about a little over a year, and it was always confirmed every time that issue was brought up, that we're sticking with the existing alignment. It might go south or north 50 to 100 feet. Now, they want to go to the south. But I've been involved with that at that level, and I will forward this email that I get from Rebecca White at CDOT.
Mr. Benson? Rebecca White will be at the NADA meeting. Do you want to attend that?
Is that, what day is that?
Jim?
It's Thursday.
Thursday?
Thursday, August 23rd at 7:30 a.m. at the Metro North Chamber of Commerce.
You know, I always hate to attend 7:30 a.m. meetings.
You know what, Jim, though, you have an obligation to-
In this instance, I will certainly-
Good. I was going to say, you have an obligation to the residents of this community.
I'm sorry, right.
And 7:30? I have to do a lot of them, so-
Are you going?
No, actually, since you said you would go, I will, I'll sleep in. But it is a very, very important issue, and I know, I know that you're on top of it.
I was looking at that agenda.
So, would you please coordinate with Jim and make sure that you have the information you need? And if something comes up and you aren't going to be there, which isn't going to happen, then I will be there. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Mr. Benson, please don't refer to these gentlemen as crackpots or crazy. They have a lot of influence and they have a lot of power and they have a lot of money, and they've been known to get some really strange things done when they want to get on it because they have the money to influence people. So, I know that right now it's just a really documented rumor, but there's stranger things that have happened out there with the metro area. Remember, the number one line for fast tracks was supposed to be DIA. The money got it shifted down south, and we haven't seen anything north of COFAC since then. So, don't ever say that people with money can't get things done.
I don't believe I said that, but-
Crackpot will make them even better. I didn't refer to them as crackpots. Somebody else did. I was just passing that on. I thought I made that clear. And you know what, Jim?
It wasn't me referring to them.
I think that's all okay. We don't need to go into detail about crackpots tonight. Okay? Since you serve on E-470 and also Dr. Cog, I think it's really apparent that you have a passion in this. And if you do go, don't call anybody names. Okay? Thank you. Now, I don't know, I'm not calling anybody names. I do have a couple of things I want to bring up, though. I've been asked by one of the board members for, or one of the members for the Business Professionals Association. We do have one foursome for their annual golf tournament coming up. Been requested that we add a second foursome with the initial intent of that to be to invite parties that have an interest in economic development into our community, to golf on that because of the event being Business Professional, to get them more involved with the, all the different folks that will be participating there. With that said, if we do add a foursome, I think it would be appropriate to split up and have city council members golf with two prospects for the city and same on the other teams so that we can engage as well during the day. Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments on that?
We can certainly do that. Absent any objections, since this is a study session and council can't take any official action, we will proceed unless there's an objection. We will proceed to add a-
Is there any objections from the council having the staff pursue that? Seeing none, thank you. Mr. Attorney, do you have something?
I have one item for my report. Last council meeting, you, the council requested that I do some checking into the legal ramifications of railroads sounding horns and blocking roadway crossings of railroads. And I'll follow this up with a memo, but just to give you preliminary information. Coincidentally, staff and I had extensive discussions with the UP railroad regarding 104th Avenue. I realize that's not the primary issue right now, but I want to bring that up. For clarification, UP is the railroad that runs along 85 and Burlington Northern runs along Highway 2. So, I'm going to speak about the UP first. Now, the UP is agreeable to providing a device that's going to cause their trains to actually derail if they're blocking, I'm not talking about moving and slowly across the crossing, but actually stopped on the crossing, blocking the passage for motor vehicles across that track at 104th and the railroad. So, that one is being handled. That was coincidentally happening while you were talking about this, about the issue. 96th Avenue, where we've got the problem with Burlington Northern and their horns, we've got construction going on a quiet zone for 96th Avenue. And in speaking with Public Works, they expect that contract to be completed, the construction completed, to have the quiet zone in place within the next 30 days because the contracts have been let, it's in process, and that hopefully will solve our noise problem at 96th Avenue. In general, there's what we call the Federal Railroad Safety Act, which is a federal law that preempts us regarding horns sounding at crossings because there's a federal law that says they have to sound horn one prolonged time and one short blast as they approach a crossing. But that's if there's no quiet zone. If there's a quiet zone, then the quiet zone rules apply. As far as the blockage is concerned, on 96th Avenue and 112th Avenue, I'm doing some more research and I'll get a memo out to you. I don't have an answer for you of what we can do as far as the UP is concerned at those crossings.
Thanks, Bob. That helps.
Thanks.
I'll go quick through my report. I went, I was a panelist for the Metro North Chamber Development Council breakfast on Eritropolis, met with David Foster and Mike Cowley, and then went with a business owner and the economic development team that is looking to expand in our city. Met with another developer on some of his needs, and Brian was a part of that. Rotary, went to Rotary, went to the Water Commission meeting on Thursday, and to the neighborhood outreach with most of the rest of the council. I did want to thank Carolyn for a wonderful card and thank you for the pictures from the trap shoot, and I'll get a chance to take a look at those. I don't think of anything else other than I have this information here in a nice book, and it's not something that I'm going to, don't laugh at me, I'm just not going to be able to utilize it, and I want to leave it for the staff in case somebody does have an interest. It's a survival guide and how to become at peace, becoming an organic vegan. And I'm a meat and potatoes guy, and I'm not going to use it. So, I don't want to, I don't want, I don't want to just dispose of it, so I will leave it for the staff. There may be somebody who wants to learn more about veganism, and with that said, I want to make sure it goes to use rather than being in my hands. So-
I'll leave mine also.
You going to leave yours as well? I'm going to stick with the beef. I just can't get away from it. I'll give up chicken, but I'm sticking with the beef. So, with that being said, if there's no other business on-
Just report Nights Out.
Oh, you want to report on Nights Out?
Yeah.
How come you, oh, you're up there. Go ahead.
National Nights Out, we had down here in Commerce City at Our Savior Lutheran Church, and we had over 80 participants there. The fire department and the police department came and talked to the residents about anything they wanted to know, told them about neighborhood watches, and just, you know, all the kids, if you have a problem, that the police and the fire department are your friends. And it was a wonderful event. Plenty of food and plenty of camaraderie with the neighborhood residents over at Our Savior.
If there's nothing else, we're finished. Thank you. And thanks for all the staff getting around.
May I?
We're in a study session.
For the scholarship fund. And council essentially said we should look at essentially extending the charter of the Quality Community Foundation to look at them as-